Because of the ongoing pandemic, Sussex County Board of County Commissioner meetings will be conducted remotely via Zoom. The public may participate online or by telephone. For the meeting agenda, visit the Sussex County website at www.sussex nj.us and click Commissioners under Events. To participate in the meeting, click Online Info. Via phone, dial 1-646-558-8656. Enter in-meeting ID 5261211125 and the passcode 07860, which is posted in Online Info, and there is the Zoom link. This is the Commissioner meeting of March 10th, 2021. It is now 6:03 PM, regular business via Zoom. Calling the meeting to order, and Teri, would you please call the roll? Teri, would you please call the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was muted still. Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Director Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Fasano?
Here.
Commissioner Patillo?
Here.
Commissioner Yardley?
Here.
Okay, next, if you would join me in a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. For our moment of silence, we actually have individuals that we would like to remember this evening. First, we would like to remember David Davy Van Gordon of Stillwater, who passed on February 28th. He served as a volunteer for many years with both the Stillwater Volunteer Fire Department and Stillwater First Aid Squad. He was a lifetime member and past chief of the fire department. He was born in Newton, and he was honorably discharged in 2016 after 32 years of service to the United States Army and New Jersey National Guard. He was also an electrician with IBEW Local 102. Also, tonight, the board remembers Blanquita Valenti, a popular vote getter who spent 15 years as a Middlesex County freeholder and 20 years as a New Brunswick City Councilwoman. She died last, this, past Tuesday evening. She was 87 years old. She became the first Latina to win a countywide election in Middlesex County in 2004. She was also the first Latina to serve on the New Brunswick City Council. So our thoughts and prayers are with both families, the family of Davy Van Gordon and Blanquita Valente. So please join me in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is the public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 10th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. Number five, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Pass. Number six, proclamations, certifications, and presentations. We have a proclamation tonight celebrating Women's History Month, and accepting this proclamation is Deborah Berry Toon, MSW. She's the executive director of Project Self-Sufficiency. Deborah Berry Toon has always been devoted to helping others. She began her professional career as a special education teacher right here in Sussex County in the Sanderson-Walpack School District. She was drawn to social work, and she earned her MSW from Rutgers University in 1985, soon after she first became involved with Project Self-Sufficiency. At that time, Project Self-Sufficiency was a nationwide pilot housing voucher program for single parents, and it was located at the Sussex County Board of Social Services. And when that pilot program ended, Deborah was part of a small group that recognized the continuing need not only for housing assistance, but for job training and support services for single parent families. Deborah is incredibly hard worker, whose commitment of time, energy, and passion to any project she undertakes is unrivaled. She balances seemingly impossible day-to-day schedules of work and home life with unfailing perseverance and grace. She's a fierce advocate of social justice causes, unflinching loyalty to her beliefs, her family, and to her friends. She's been elevated in the community and in the state of New Jersey through her sheer hard work in the bulk of her accomplishments. Throughout 30 years of service, she's overcome tremendous challenges to keep the organization running, but to expand it. The elimination of drastic cuts to state and federal funding streams, the loss of founding board president Michael Holm to cancer, the continual struggle to find safe and adequate office space, none of this has ever stopped Deborah. She's drawn upon Project Self-Sufficiency's hard-earned reputation for excellence and her own profile in the community to forge strong local fundraising programs that bring in more than $1 million annually in unrestricted operating funds. PSS conducted a high-profile capital campaign in 2004, which raised an unprecedented $10 million for the construction of a new four-building, 35,000-square-foot campus. And because of these efforts, Project Self-Sufficiency's comprehensive services are housed in a single location, which is beautiful, it's welcoming, and it's conveniently located. It employs more than 80 full-time and part-time employees. Though in a rural area where the majority of employment opportunities tend to be low wage or low skill, PSS is an invaluable resource, not only as a social service provider, but as a local employer. And since 1987, Project Self-Sufficiency has served 27,862 individuals, empowering them to make sustainable progress towards self-sufficiency. And lastly, as a direct result of Deborah's leadership, Project Self-Sufficiency has received several honors, including the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce Quality and Living Award, both in 1990 and 2006, a local DICE Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Award, a Domestic Abuse Services, or DAISY, Violence Prevention Award, and has received or been nominated for countless other awards in recent years. And Deborah herself is the recipient of a New Jersey Department of Education, Division of Vocational Education Gender Equity Leader of the Year Award. And in 2007, she received one of only three statewide honors awarded by the Community Foundation of New Jersey for exemplary performance in nonprofit management. This board cannot think of anybody more appropriate to receive this proclamation in honor of Women's History Month for truly being a trailblazer and making history in Sussex County. So at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Patillo to please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Dawn. The proclamation is celebrating Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing a majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthrop and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing our own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners that March is designated as Women's History Month, certified as a true copy of a resolution adopted March 10th, 2021 by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Director Dawn Fantasia, Deputy Director Anthony Fasano, and Commissioners Chris Carney, Sylvia Patillo, and Herb Yardley.
Thank you, Sylvia. And I would like to ask Deborah if she would like to speak.
Thank you so much. I am so surprised and humbled by this honor. It has been my privilege and my blessing to have had the opportunity to have worked in Sussex County. I think we have a wonderful, wonderful community. It is caring, where neighbors help neighbors. And I would like to say that all of us stand on the shoulders of all the women who have gone before us. I'd like to just mention one. The first woman mayor in the state of New Jersey was Mrs. Spurgeon in the town of Newton. And so I would like to accept this award on behalf of the 27,000 men and women that have been served by Project Self-Sufficiency in the last 34 years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for joining us this evening. And God bless you in the work that you do.
God bless you too. Thank you so much.
All right, next is number seven, public hearings. And we have our final adoption of a resolution. At our regular meeting held on February 24th, 2021, we introduced our first reading, the following resolution, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of February 28th, 2021, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Authorizing cap to limit county budget appropriation increase in CY 2021 county budget to 3.5% over the previous year's final appropriation, subject to certain exceptions, and to establish an appropriation cap bank. Now, we're going to do the motion and the second, and then under discussion, I'm first going to ask Administrator Poff to please explain again, for the sake of the public, much as at the last meeting, what the purpose or the statutory purpose of this is, and to clarify that this does not mean this board is borrowing 3.5% or raising our budget 3.5% from the prior year, because that is not the case. So first, I need a motion for the public hearing to be opened.
I make the motion.
And a second?
Second, Commissioner Carney.
And now for discussion, I'll first ask Administrator Poff.
Yes, thank you very much, Director. As I've shared previously, the county is required to conform to two tax levy caps. The 2020, or excuse me, the 2010 2% tax levy cap and the 1977 levy cap. For 2021, the county has a cap bank from 2019 of just over $1 million, which will expire if not used in 2021, along with additional cap bank from 2020 of about $1.3 million, which could be used in fiscal years '21 or '22. This resolution is being considered by the board as a result of statutory change implemented by the state a number of years ago, eliminating what previously was automatic cap banking. This is a financial tool, and the reason why the board is being asked to consider this is by adopting this resolution, the board is able to take advantage of the statutory provisions of cap banking, which is simply a financial tool that the county can use to be able to address extraordinary, unanticipated, or unexpected budget increases. As the director has said, the county is not increasing its budget to the 3.5%. In fact, as will be discussed soon, the proposed budget for 2021 is actually reduced. This is simply the opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to be able to use this cap banking provision in state statute to allow for a cap banking, which the county could use if it were to ever encounter an extraordinary, unanticipated increase, such as pensions and benefits, or some other type of disaster that would require us to otherwise exceed what the annual levy cap is.
Thank you. Any discussion from any other commissioner? Okay, all those in favor of the public hearing being open, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Pass. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this resolution? If so, you would hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself if you have dialed in. And if you've used the Zoom app or you are on a digital device, what you would do is you would find your name, and you would press the red microphone with the line through it to unmute yourself. And we'd ask you to state your name and your municipality, and the clerk will create a roll and then call you in the order that you've listed your name. So at this time, would anybody like to be heard on this issue?
This is for the resolution about women's history?
No, this is the public hearing authorizing the county budget appropriation for the cap bank.
No.
Hearing no one coming forward?
No.
I'd ask for a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Hey.
Sir, if you're going to make a comment, you have to identify your name and municipality on the subject matter at hand, which is the cap resolution.
John, Opac on.
John, what is your last name?
Stovig.
And what is your comment regarding the cap resolution?
No. Why would we take more money from ourselves? Just in case.
That is your comment? No?
Just in case.
I'm timing you, John. Is that your comment for I need to move on to the caller? Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, is there another caller?
Harry Dunleavy.
Mr. Dunleavy, yes, can I just have the municipality?
Frankfurt Township, Augusta is the name of the area.
All right, Mr. Dunleavy, you have three minutes or less for your comment.
I think the whole thing, as reported in the paper, is a waste of time because the people, the commissioners at the moment, are not interested in ameliorating things. And they particularly discriminated against me with the Sussex County Technical School, where I was once the president of the board. And they took no action and renewed a member that's discriminated against me.
This is testimony or specifically limited to authorizing the cap on the county budget appropriation? If you wish to address another issue, at the end of the meeting, there's an open public session to address any issue you wish. But this one is specifically the hearing for the cap bank.
For the what?
For the cap bank that we just discussed.
What cap bank? That's not what the paper said.
Yes, sir, this is number seven on the agenda. It's the public hearing and the final adoption of the resolution, authorizing cap to limit county budget appropriation. So that's what this portion of the open public session is. So I'm going to ask you to please hold your commentary, since it doesn't appear to be related to this specific issue, until the open public session that is...
Are you talking about, do you mean the capital? Could you, well, there's somebody else on the line talking, so there's other noise there. It's difficult to hear you.
Okay, I'm going to ask the call administrator...
Capital, something you said.
I'm going to ask the call administrator to please find the line that is making the background noise, please, and mute it. Thank you. This is the public hearing authorizing cap to limit county budget appropriation increase, 2021 county budget to 3.5% over the previous year's final appropriation, subject to certain exceptions, and to establish an appropriation cap bank. As Administrator Poff explained, this acts as a safety net in case of extraordinary emergent circumstances in the county. This does not mean the county is borrowing or exceeding 3.5% over the prior year's budget. Do you have any comments on that, sir, or we're going to move on?
Yes, I do. There is millions being wasted in the county already, and I don't think anything further should be added to it. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no one else coming forward, I need a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Don't move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next, I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it, Dawn. Second.
Thank you. And Teri, a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Thanks for taking my bunny.
Excuse me, but I had my hand raised to be heard, and nobody acknowledged it.
Okay, you would have had to unmute yourself in order to unmute...
I did. I had my hand raised and I was unmuted.
Okay, this is, I see here, I see, is this Peg?
Yes.
Okay, Peg DeSasse, I see that your hand is here. I'm going to ask our county council, now that that session is closed, may we open, may we just accept Ms. DeSasse's comment?
Yes.
We may just accept. Okay, so, Ms. DeSasse, you have three minutes to comment on that resolution.
Thank you very much. Peg DeSasse, Vernon Township. I'm going to say the same thing I said to my own township when they voted on this. I believe that this is just a loophole to be able to go over the 2% cap, and I am not in favor of it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are at number eight, public session from the floor. Now, this is the first of two public sessions. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to agenda items only. Before we open this session, we are again going to ask callers wanting to make a comment. And nobody is going to be permitted to unmute because our county council and myself do have a statement to make. So when we have completed that, we will allow unmuting of callers on the line. Again, you will say your name and your municipality. The clerk will create a roster, and then we'll call you in the order received. Again, this is for items that are listed on the agenda only. So I'm going to first ask county council for the statement that he has asked me.
Thanks, Dawn. Because we have a great amount of county business to conduct tonight, including a long executive session, and because we also may have a large public comment again, I just want to go over the rules briefly so that everybody is clear and everybody understands what we're doing and not doing here. Now, as we say in our agenda, this first public session is for comments about agenda items only. Before we open this session, we want callers who want to make a comment to first state their name and their municipality. And from that, the clerk will create a roster and call each person in the order received. The comments are limited to three minutes or less. So the session we're about to have is limited to agenda items. For example, if you want to speak about any of the resolutions that we have in item 13, please do it now at the first session. You won't get to do it at the second session because that is about general items that are not on the agenda. And you won't get a chance to repeat yourself at the second session. So, once again, if it's on the agenda, you want to talk about it, do it now. Please also be respectful to everyone involved in this meeting. And we ask everybody to do that. And please don't disrupt the meeting. And disruption, by that we mean any kind of inappropriate statements, anything with profanity, threats, defamation, shouting. We don't want to have to mute anybody at this meeting. I have one last comment about something that specifically happened at the last meeting that was a concern to us, to me. At the last meeting, we had a member of the public accusing another member of the public as being someone else. And we found nothing to indicate that that was true.
Did you research it?
For people. We want to remind people that when you're addressing the board or the commissioners' meetings, you're directing your comments to the commissioners and to the board. That's what the public session is for, to allow you to speak to the commissioners. It's not the place to talk about other citizens or accuse other people of other things, or it's about your comment. And only about the comments, and only to the commissioner board. So please keep that in mind. Nobody go after anybody else in this forum. And let's have a good meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Also, this maybe is the third time now that somebody couldn't contain themselves and blurted out. And if we were in a live session, pandemic excluded, you would be escorted from the building because that's not what we do. So I'm going to ask the call moderator again, as I'm speaking here, to please watch. And whoever lights up green for speaking, please remove them from the meeting. We do not interrupt our speakers when they come. Everybody gets their three minutes to speak on whatever they would like. But we expect the same courtesy extended to us and the same courtesy extended to all of the speakers. And just a note myself that I would just like to address is that this here, when you were here, this is the people's house. This isn't the commissioner's house. This is the people's house. And we happen to be the democratically elected representatives of the people of the county. Some of you may not like that, and some of you may like that, but our elections are facts. They're certified and unambiguous. Earlier this year, former candidate for this board proposed a resolution, and this board was gracious and entertained that resolution as we do when individuals from the public submit for board consideration. We took public comment and often abuse. We weighed various perspectives and proposed our own language. For our efforts, we were set upon, and in hindsight, seems to be a bit more interested in launching partisan politics and the partisan abuse of the board in the public session is quite clear from the recorded minutes, which feature name-calling and appearances from all different kinds of, um, people involved, be it a committee woman, candidates, and whatnot. And this board was called a lot of names, and the ethnic heritage of every member of this board has been ridiculed. And this is not the purpose of these public sessions. This is the people's business. So we went before the people. They chose us to represent them, all, all of them, and conduct business in their name. So the resolution proposed by this board does not concern itself with hate and blame and with settling scores. We've decided to proceed in a more positive way and approach the issue from the aspect of respect. And I certainly hope that going forward, we can all agree to respect each other, beginning with the board not interrupting you in your comments and asking that you do not interrupt one another or say disparaging remarks about each other as testimony or open comments are given tonight. So at this point, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to speak again. If you were on a phone, you will press star six to unmute yourself. And please don't just shout out your names quickly. Wait till you hear confirmation of your name back and municipality by the clerk, who will create the roll when the roster is called, uh, when the roster is complete, she will begin calling names. And again, if you are on the Zoom app, press the microphone to unmute yourself. You can begin.
Michael Schnackenberg Newton.
Uh, I'm sorry, one speaker at a time. Michael?
Michael Schnackenberg Newton.
Thank you. Michael Schnackenberg Newton.
Almir Asmatovic.
Matthew Conway Vernon.
But, I'm sorry, uh, uh, I think the second caller was Almir, um, Asmatovic?
Yeah, that's correct. Hamburg.
And Matthew Conway Vernon.
Matthew Conway in Vernon.
David Dewitt, Hampton Township.
David Dewitt, Hampton Township.
Robert Kneecat Vernon.
I'm sorry, Robert, could you repeat the last name?
K-N-E-C-A, ma'am.
And that was Vernon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, Caitlin Gagnon Sparta.
Yeah.
Okay, Caitlin, I have you.
Sorry, uh, Scott Ball, Andover Township.
Kristy Leaven, Hardison.
Just one moment, Kristy. Okay, done. Kristy Leaven, Hardison.
Zoe Keith Vernon.
Zoe Keith Vernon. Just one second.
Mike Vrabel.
After Zoe. I'm sorry, who is this Sparta gentleman?
Uh, Mike Vrabel, Sparta.
Mike Vrabel, Sparta.
Adina.
Natalie.
Anne Pomilio Vernon.
Okay, I've got three of you all at once going.
Scott Ball Andover.
I have Scott Ball Andover. I have Kristy Leaven. So Keith from Vernon. Mike Vrabel from Sparta, and then three of you spoke at once.
Anne Pomilio from Sparta.
Anne Pomilio from Sparta. Okay. Please be considerate of your background noise. Uh, some of you, I think, are in your kitchen, so we're hearing all the pots and pans. After Anne Pomilio in Sparta, who do we have next?
Ken Drews Hampton Township.
I'm sorry, uh, one, one second, one second. Is it Ken?
Yes.
Ken, what was the last name?
Drews Hampton Township.
Drews Hampton Township. All right, next caller.
Adina Luthner Vernon.
Adina Luther?
Luthner, L-E-U-T-H-N-E-R, and that's Vernon.
Okay, we've got the pots again. Please be careful of your background noise, whoever that caller is. Um, next?
Can you, Demaris Lyra Sussex Borough.
Okay, I'm sorry, the Sussex Borough, what was the name?
Demaris Lyra.
Demaris Lyra. Okay, Demaris Lyra Sussex Borough, next?
Donna Mullin Franklin.
One moment, I'm taking Donna first. Donna Mullin.
Franklin.
Franklin. All right, then there was another caller after Donna.
Um, yeah, Natalie Gutierrez Vernon.
Natalie Gutierrez in.
Be like boy, be like boy, U-C-C-I-E-R-I.
All right, Natalie Gutierrez Vernon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Rotundi Hampton.
Katie Rotundi in Hampton. Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Palladini Vernon.
What was the first name? Palladini?
Jessica.
Jessica. Jessica Palladini in Vernon. Thank you. Next caller?
Mick DiPiano Newton.
Mick DiPiano Newton. All right, after Mick?
Jim Brocato Sparta.
Jim Brocato?
Yeah, B-R-O-C-A-T-O.
Okay, in Sparta. Thank you.
Kath Galvin Hampton Township.
Kath Galvin?
Yes, Hampton Township.
Hampton Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Salerina Sparta.
Katie Salerina Sparta. All right, next?
Stephen Shaw Byram.
Stephen Shaw Byram. Next?
Michelle Van Allen Hardison.
Michelle Van Allen Hardison. Next?
Patrick Carreri Vernon.
Carreri Vernon. Okay, Patrick. Next?
Okay, hearing no one else come forward.
I'm sorry, can I, Jim Baldini? Sorry about that, Terry. Jim Baldini?
Jim Baldini, um, from which municipality, Mr. Baldini?
Sandiston.
I'm sorry, Handis- Hardison?
Sandiston. No, Sandiston.
Sandiston, okay.
Deborah Kaiser Newton.
One second, Deborah Kaiser Newton. Thank you.
Kenny Collins Andover.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the name again? I did hear Andover.
Ken Collins.
Ken Collins?
Yes.
In Andover. Is that township or borough?
Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's twenty-nine callers.
Okay. I'm not hearing anyone else come forward. Uh, Terry, if you can begin calling the roster, thank you.
We have Michael Schnackberger from, uh, Newton.
Yes, good evening. Uh, this is in reference to item thirteen D on the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, here we go again. The Board of Commissioners, who obviously don't have enough to govern Sussex County, if you can call it that, are once again going to try and tell Trenton what to do. Commissioner Director Dawn Fantasia, who obviously has too much time on her hands, has crafted a resolution calling upon the legislature to force Governor Murphy to lift, lift the current state of emergency and open the state à la such knuckleheads as Texas Governor Greg Abbott and Mississippi Governor Tate Reeves. By the way, Governor Murphy announced today that limits for restaurants, bars, casinos, gyms, personal care services, and amusement venues will increase to fifty percent on March nineteenth. This resolution has no force of law, no force of law. If it's sent to the governor, I hope he immediately tears it up and trashes it after first having a good laugh. What gives this board the idea that they can waste taxpayer time and money on a grandstanding piece of garbage that presumes to tell the governor what to do? And further, where does Director Fantasia get the idea that she knows more than the experts who say we are not yet out of the woods with COVID? How many more people have to die before you face reality? Arbitrary science, Commissioner Fantasia? Is that even a valid term, or is that another way of saying alternative facts? Science is what it is. If you believe Texas and Mississippi are doing the right thing, you should resign and move to one of those states. I guarantee you won't. In her resolution, Fantasia even concedes that under the Emergency Health Powers Act, a declared public health emergency expires after thirty days unless renewed, which the governor has done every thirty days. The act doesn't say a public health emergency expires when Dawn Fantasia says so. So the governor is acting in accordance with the law. End of story. And in an unbelievable act of chutzpah, she calls upon the governor to return the state to constitutional government and democratic ideals. Well, we already have a constitutional government operating with democratic ideals. She just disagrees with them as she does with anyone with a D-label for party affiliation. And since when did Director Fantasia suddenly ca- care about the constitution and democracy? In the end, this is just another tactic by a board that cares nothing about their constituents, led by a narcissistic demagogue who thinks she knows better than anyone.
One minute.
Commissioner Fantasia, if you pass this resolution, I promise to do everything in my power to make twenty twenty-one your last year in office. Just like the rest of your Republican cult, you will have proven conclusively that the well-being of your constituents is not your concern. Thank you.
Next caller is Almir Asmatovic from Hamburg.
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening. Uh, welcome to March. Uh, we're almost there, uh, over this winter. Um, so I really, A, haven't read any history books. I don't have any lessons for anybody tonight. Uh, B, um, I would just want to talk about one generality. Uh, I think we really, here in Sussex County, need to have a town hall meeting with our elected officials. I understand that there's, there's some disconnect here with the people that voted for the commissioners and people that have not. But the issue is here that elected politicians do represent everybody in the Sussex County, regardless of their voting record. So, wi- without any further, um, saying here, uh, I think we're kind of wasting our time here with the three minutes back and forth and waiting two weeks until another three minutes back and forth. I think that we should have a town hall meeting, at least here, quarterly because that's how, uh, engineers do it. That's how system, uh, uh, project managers do it with the stakeholders. You guys are project managers. We are the stakeholders of Sussex County. You kind of need to let us know in an open forum, not a three-minute forum, what's going on in, in Sussex County and somewhere where we can ask questions and you can answer questions. Not one of those, uh, things where we do three, three minutes and then people go back on their Facebook pages and then they get post memes and whatnot. I am, I'm not a person who is upset easily. I've, I've been places. I've, m- my, my anxiety has been acting up, uh, through combat, through, through living United States, through living with, with a COVID situation, especially with my wife getting COVID and having about twenty-five percent lung damage after recovering. It's, I think that we seriously need to sit down and talk about the issue that, that are going on here in Sussex because I really don't know who I'm getting anymore when I talk to people here. Am I getting somebody who's putting their fake name in here and then anonymously going on, on Facebook and trashing people that they don't know? Uh, trying to, to get their, uh, characters, uh, uh, underneath the feet, throwing them underneath the bus? I, i- it's, it's ridiculous. Let's just have some town hall meetings here, people, where people can actually talk and have some decorum. Zoom is a perfect place to start, and then hopefully, after we all get vaccinated somehow, we can start meeting in place and do some social distancing with masks on and talk about issues and move this county forward. Not divisive, uh, politics and, and Facebook, uh, uh, being, being a meme pro on Facebook. It's ridiculous. I don't even know who I'm getting anymore. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Matthew Conway from Vernon.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to, to call in just to, and I, uh, just to, to say to the county commissioners, I, I mean no disrespect when I say this, but I don't need a government body to tell me what's right and what's wrong. Uh, I, I don't need a, a resolution to tell me who should be hating, who should we be sticking up for, or any of that. Um, we have free speech in this, in this country, um, and these resolutions that are popping up all over the county are kind of ridiculous. They just did this nonsense over in Vernon last week where they, they, they pushed this stuff and all of it's coming out of DC by, it's Josh Gottheimer when his minions pushing it out to try and get everybody in Sussex County to be called a racist. And it's nonsense. It's just, it's like, I don't understand why we have to have this stuff at our, at our, at our, at our meetings. I don't understand why, why we have to waste our time at, at the, at the county commissioners on this. Um, my parents taught me how to behave. I went to, you know, and the church taught me how to behave growing up. I, I don't look to the, to the governing bodies to instill, uh, integrity or decency within me. I, I already have it. We just, we just need to protect, to protect our freedoms of speech, um, and that's, and that's all the governing body should be doing. And, uh, and I just think this, this kind of stuff is nonsense, a- and, and this kind of rhetoric just, just needs to stop. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is David Dewitt from Hampton Township.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I wanted to speak about the, uh, anti-hate resolution. Is that in order at this point? I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I just need to know if that's what I can be speaking about.
There's a, there's a resolution with respect regarding respect.
Thank you. Uh, let me first of all say, uh, that, uh, I appreciate the amount of service and the amount of time that the Board of Commissioners puts into governing this county. Um, I think the name-calling and the vitriol that sometimes spouts out of a lot of your opponents doesn't help anyone. It doesn't get us anywhere. Um, you folks do govern this county. I may be a member of the, uh, vocal minority, but I do respect your service to this county. However, your first resolution, the anti-hate one, was an interesting history lesson about nine eleven, but didn't really address the issue. I've read your new resolution, which was a very, uh, uh, skillful pivot to the positive. It doesn't address the issue that's on everybody's mind. When I talk about hate resolutions or think about hate groups in this country, the image of, of gentlemen, and hard to call them a gentleman, beating a Capitol police officer with an American flag is the image that pops up into my mind. The issue of January sixth, I think, is what everyone needs you folks to comment on. And the reason is, we need to trust you folks. We need to trust you folks that you're going to tell us the truth, that you're not going to varnish absolute horror that particular day. Anybody that can look at that and tell me it was Antifa that did it and tell me that there's Democratic conspirators that got together that group and beat those guys and pushed against them and trashed our Capitol, that's just not what happened. We need to tell the truth. We need to have the commissioners tell the truth. We need to know where you stand on the big lie, which is now going to permeate these next two years of political discourse in this country. And it doesn't do us any good, doesn't do the Republican Party any good, it doesn't do the loyal opposition any good. We need to move on. We need to start talking about. We need to start talking about issues that really mean something to people in this county. Just tell the truth. Thank you.
Okay, our next caller is Robert Neck from Vernon. Robert from Vernon.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You can start.
I am also addressing item E, the respect resolution, which started out, as we all know, from Ms. Lavin's resolution condemning fascists. Well, I don't want to use that word, I'm sorry, forgive me, condemning the events of January sixth, basically, and the type of people that are doing that. That evidently wasn't good enough, so then we came up with another one where we included Black Lives Matter. We wanted to include that because that was evidently in the minds of some, a terrorist organization or something, but my take on that is, if you want to include Black Lives Matter, then in that kind of resolution, you think that Black Lives Matter, Black Lives don't matter. Now, I guess you finally realized it, and I came up with this American apple pie thing that doesn't say anything. And what I'm asking you to do is to go back to Ms. Lavin's original proposal and prove that, because it needs to be said, it needs to be done. By no means am I saying that every Republican is in favor of this. I know many of my friends are Republicans, and they're not in favor of it. They're horrified by it. And this is a warning to you. You are going to eventually lose your base. As far as respect is concerned, one of you said, when somebody stated their name, screamed out, "Oh, no." That's not respect. And that member of your board should make an apology, and I would ask him to do that tonight. I would really appreciate it. And if he can't do that, he really ought to consider resigning. And I thank you very much for your time.
All right. Our next caller is Scott Paul from Andover Township. Scott Paul, Andover Township. One last time. Is this Scott Paul from Andover Township?
Yes, yes, yeah. My apologies. Yeah, I'm having some issues with the phone, but I'm, yeah, I guess I'm good to go.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to comment on the pro-respect resolution. I feel like this is the sort of, you know, ends to a saga, and I'm sure a lot of us are happy about that, but, you know, as mentioned, this started with a resolution that was presented to the board to address hate groups and racism here in Sussex County. And I think it's important to remember the origins so that we can look at the current resolution in the right context. I asked a couple of weeks ago if the commissioners have taken a cultural competency course or anything like that, and that wasn't a joke or a dig or anything like that, but an actual question, because I've learned not to confuse ignorance with malice. You know, you don't know what you don't know. But as our elected representatives, it's essential to involve people who can, you know, fill in the holes of your perspectives. And the pro-respect resolution, you know, it was actually, it was well-written, you know, I read it, I know a lot of people have read it, and there's a lot of great things in there, but the idea that you can squash discrimination or racism or anything like that with simple respect, it's such a, and I don't want to get into name-calling and the whole nine, I really don't want it to be negative, I just want you guys to hear it from the other perspectives. It just, it's very naive. And when I asked about the cultural competency courses, and I asked if there's people of color, you know, that are brought in to help shape these kind of things, where, like, where, what is the evidence that racism can be squashed by respect? Is there any, are there any scholars that have told you that? Are there any anti-racist workers that you've talked with who told you that respect was the route to solving this? Because I've never, thank you, I've never seen that, and it just seems like, just seems like, you know, yeah. Earlier, you know, earlier Women's History Month was mentioned, and that was great, and I want you guys to imagine that there were like five board members, five male board members who were deciding on the, on women's rights, you know, on women's reproductive rights, whatever, like, it wouldn't really make sense. And that's just something that I really want to drill in the point is like inclusivity, you can't really have these conversations, you can't really get to the real resolutions to these issues unless you actually really listen to what everybody has to say, and I think that that's just not, that's just not really going on right now. So you're going to continue getting this backlash because people are feeling not heard, and if you aren't going to include us, we're going to have to include ourselves, and that's just kind of the problem.
I apologize. I skipped a caller. Kaitlin Gossen from Sparta. Kaitlin, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize.
No worries. I'll speak quickly, and then if I have any remaining time, I'd be happy to turn it over to Mr. Paul. So I, too, would like to address resolution thirteen E. I love the idea of a pro-respect resolution in general. I do think our Sussex County communities deserve a resolution or some form of acknowledgement touching upon this issue, but not as feeble means of addressing the dire need in our county for an anti-racism resolution, particularly in light of the extremism we witnessed taking place at our beloved Capitol on American soil. But we really don't have to travel as far as DC to find that extremism happening here in Sussex County. I don't believe our commissioners have taken a strong enough stance in regards to this, even with the most recent proposed pro-respect resolution. We must denounce racism and extremism in all forms, no matter our political motivations or alignments. I also find it concerning to think that a three-point-five percent county budget increase somehow deserves less scrutiny and less executive time than a simple request made by the public to address racism in our communities, which is an absolutely viable concern. Publicly denouncing racism and promoting respect simply do not equate to one another. A pro-respect resolution is not the same as an anti-hate or anti-racism resolution. What happens when someone says it is their respectful right to discriminate or intimidate or worse? Our rights and our freedoms as individuals are part and parcel to our responsibilities and our civic duties to our neighbors and our country as a whole. That being said, I'll end with this. It was mentioned earlier this evening that the public here especially is expected to show respect for a democratically-elected Sussex County board. I'm wholeheartedly inclined to agree, but I would encourage everyone on this call, commissioners included and beyond, to show the same respect you're requesting for our democratically-elected governor, Governor Murphy, who's been in one of the most unique positions that a governor can be in, given the ongoing pandemic. On personal pages or otherwise, I believe our conduct on social media is the perfect arena for everyone to demonstrate their respect, their professionalism, and their composure. Anyone happy to yield that minute? Back to Mr. Paul.
That's not permitted under the rules, but thank you. We're going to move on to the next caller, which is Kristi Lavin from Sparta. Kristi, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. It's been two months.
Sorry. Move upon from your start area to take the place of another.
Excuse me?
Kristi, why don't you just start now, please?
Are we not going to condemn that interruption?
Thank you. Ken, I'm sorry, I was a little distracted. It's been two months since I presented the resolution to condemn hate in our community. I appreciated the board considering this idea, and it seemed many residents in the community weighed in with support and their own feelings regarding this matter. What was consistent in each meeting when residents called in was the request to acknowledge racism that members of the community had experienced and to acknowledge it in your resolution. Each meeting this was a consistent request by members of the public. Even more credible, in my opinion, and worthy of listening to, were people of color calling in to share their own experiences personally. So while I appreciate that this new resolution is much improved from your initial, the fact that you've once again ignored each member of the public that made this request is confounding to me. To not have one sentence to condemn white supremacy in our community when it was asked repeatedly at your meetings by the public, by taxpayers, and by people of color that have suffered from discrimination in our county is, again, hard for me to understand. If we have a portion of our community being marginalized and they are letting us know that, then why would we not embrace supporting them? I think that there are a lot of different reasons someone might feel compelled to speak at commissioner meetings. Each time, I would venture to say that they do so hoping to be heard, and they believe that there is something that they have to say that is worthy of being voiced. That is why we have this platform to speak to our representatives. So each and every caller and resident that takes the time to voice a statement and concern or thought, I think deserves respect. I'm just beginning to wonder what speaking at commissioner meetings have become. Speak at your own risk. Prepare to be disparaged on a weekly basis by Sussex watchdog if you wish to speak at a commissioner meeting. I am not an elected official. I'm not running for office, nor did I have any intention to. I'm a member of the public that called in and sought to introduce a resolution to this board, asking you to condemn white supremacy, and for two months have been attacked relentlessly by the Jersey conservative and Sussex watchdog. I admit, the attacks are rather absurd, but uncalled-for and persistent.
One minute.
I would also like to call out the concept of us all being on equal standing, as Commissioner Fantasia assured. All residents calling into meetings should feel safe to do so without harassment. Now, can this board control what the Tea Party leader says about a resident that calls in or what the watchdog publishes? Of course not. But perhaps you can choose not to use those entities as a source in your briefings when they are openly disparaging residents that call into your meetings, doing nothing more than using their First Amendment rights. That is what you can do. I do not pretend any of you are ignorant to these attacks, as they are shared on the GOP site as well. The last time you felt protective of residents feeling unsafe expressing themselves, you put out a press release. That was a Republican that was interrupted in a meeting.
Kristi, I'm sorry, but I thank you for your comments. I did extend you an extra second or two, so you know. The next caller we have is Zoe Heath from Vernon.
Thank you. I, wow, you guys.
I'm sorry, wait, wait, one second. Zoe, I apologize. This is Commissioner Fantasia. You're going to get your full three minutes. I just want to address the gentleman that kept interrupting. He was under the screen name of Simply John, who interrupted Ms. Lavin. I've removed him. If this gentleman in this number calls back in, I'm asking the call administrator to not let him back into the call because he is a repeat offender, but so you know, he's been removed from the call. I apologize for the interruption, and Zoe, you have a full three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm also speaking on the pro-respect resolution simply because not only is it inherently false in what it claims about what it is like to live and work in Sussex County, it's dangerous. Sussex County has had an increase of hate crimes. We've seen homes vandalized with anti-Semitic graffiti. We've seen businesses vandalized with anti-Semitic graffiti. We've seen responses to people saying Black Lives Matter have, people who have said these things and organized rallies like this, have been harassed. Police have had to be involved because families have been harassed just for saying something as simple as Black Lives Matter. And frankly, if you cannot respect somebody's existence, it is dangerous for a county government to say, "All are welcome here," because that's not true. I've been harassed for my sexual orientation. Other people have been harassed for their race. Other people have been harassed for their religion, and claiming that this is a kumbaya place to live is a lie and it is dangerous. And frankly, the commissioners have no place to be speaking about respect, because at the last meeting, a commissioner who wasn't even elected said, "Oh, no," when I wanted to speak. And while I think it's hilarious that a twenty-one-year-old strikes fear into the hearts of man that he has to unmute himself and talk about his dissent, but frankly, that's incredibly disrespectful. So, and I don't respect racism, so it's truly, I'm laughing because it's funny and just frankly so unbelievably out of touch and tone deaf. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your second. Our next caller is Mike Vrabel from Sparta.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I realize that the commissioners do have a task to govern, and the resolutions that are passed in the past by the commissioners do mean something, whether they're meaningless as far as law, but words matter. I'm a big believer in that. And I do commend the fact that this resolution, while the first time Kristi Lavin brought up her resolution, I think four meetings ago, was totally ignored, to me, that did not engender an environment of respect initially. Now, the subsequent meetings, it obviously was not ignored, and the reason being is because many, many constituents called in, many constituents, and voiced their opinion. And that's what, to me, democracy is all about, and I do appreciate that forum as being a manifestation of democracy. I used to, I used to coach high school hockey. I was an aircraft commander in the Air Force. I've been in positions of leadership, and I do, there's nothing to argue about with this respect resolution. It is, it is nothing anyone would argue against. It has the word discrimination in it. It's just, it's just, it would be fine if January sixth never occurred. It would be fine if the FBI and Homeland Security doesn't now acknowledge white nationalism, white nationalist groups, white supremacist groups as the biggest threat to our democracy. I took an oath to defend this country against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and we have a problem right now in this country with domestic terrorism, and it manifested itself on January sixth. The Vernon resolution courageously took that on directly. It mentioned January sixth, that's not being tolerated. That's all we ask, that it's starting to feel like there is some subterfuge of nefarious agenda for them not mentioning this, for you guys not mentioning this. I have to trust you, but I, once again, want to reiterate that respect and trust is earned. It's a two-way street. So I do take umbrage with that, that you have not addressed that, but I do, there's nothing to argue about with a respect resolution. And I just want to point out that this was not true leadership, because this, you wouldn't have had this respect resolution on the board here if it wasn't for all the constituents calling in and pressuring you. The people led you on this one. You should have been leading the people like the Vernon Council led their township. And thank you for your time.
Our next caller is Anne Pompilio from Sparta. Anne Pompilio from Sparta.
Good evening. Anne Pompilio from Sparta. Thank you, commissioners, for your service on this board. We in Sussex County have faith that you want to do what's right and to serve our county. Thank you for the timely proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. The pro-respect resolution is a marked improvement on the earlier proposed resolution. However, it still misses the mark. While it seeks to advance respect in the county, it is silent on the issue of what is a real problem in our country and in our county. The issue is a denouncement of white supremacy, white nationalism, and neo-Nazism. Words do matter. When words are not stated, silence fills the void. Please, pastors, pass the resolution that denounce- Please, pass the resolution that denounces white supremacy, white nationalism and neo-Nazism. Please pass the resolution authored by Christie Lavin. Please send that resolution to Governor Murphy and I cede the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Ken Drews from Hampton. Ken, are you there?
It wouldn't unmute, sorry.
This is Ken Drews from Hampton.
Yes, thank you.
You can start.
Thank you. I don't think that nefarious is necessarily the right word, but naive certainly is with regards to the pro-respect resolution. I think it's redundant with the Declaration of Independence. It doesn't really add anything to that document. And since this group likes to make lists and has listed ethnicity, race, faith, gender, then what about sexual orientation and gender identification? This, the pro-respect resolution is just wimpy and I agree with a lot of the speakers who think we need something more definitive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Anana Luther from Vernon.
Adina Luther from Vernon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have to say I'm quite disgusted and disheartened by the conversations held here about an anti-hate resolution for our county. As the granddaughter of Holocaust survivors, one grandmother who survived Auschwitz, I am afraid for our beautiful county and the people who call it home. The role of an elected official is not only to represent the people who voted for you, but to represent all of your constituents as a whole, even if they don't look like you, love like you, or pray like you. I am appalled at the way our commissioners refuse to use the words anti-hate, racism, and white supremacy in a resolution denouncing these things. It is real and it is here among us. In 2017, days before the High Holiday of Russia Shana, the Wantage Airport diner was defaced with swastikas and anti-Semitic rhetoric. In 2018, a New Jersey couple from Hampton had their Goethammer signs vandalized. Words spray painted on their signs vote MAGA, lib suck, go to Cali Dems, and a swastika. In March of 2019, two bathrooms at High Point Regional High School were vandalized with swastika etchings and messages that read, "Kill the Jews and Hitler was here." In June of 2019 in Greentownship, an individual sent doctored images with Nazi imagery to Jewish individuals. And in Franklin in 2019, New Jersey European Heritage Association, an alt-right group, distributed propaganda with the QR code for the New Jersey European Heritage Association and propaganda that read, "No communism in America. Defend our borders and family and tradition, our land and culture. Be bold enough commissioners to pass an actual anti-hate resolution because your right to speech may be free, but you are not free from the consequences of that speech. Thank you."
Our next caller is Demeris Lenora from Sussex Borough.
Thanks, Demeris, Lira.
Lira, thank you.
As I sat down to gather my thoughts for what I wanted to say today, I kept thinking, "Why has it been so difficult for Sussex County leaders to simply recognize the problems of racism in our county and take steps to improve them?" As a newly appointed chair to the Sussex County Democratic Committee's Diversity and Inclusion Working Group, I was very excited to hear that the commissioners might entertain the idea of a bipartisan committee to discuss balanced conversations and actions towards combating racism and bias in our shared communities. The SCDC believes that the only way to drive Sussex County forward and to end the stigma that is associated with this county is to first include anyone and then welcome and support diversity to make sure everyone feels like they have a voice. By doing this, we can exemplify the positive value of this behavior and help continue, contribute to larger-scale social change. In 2020, more than half of the nation's children are expected to be part of the minority race or ethnic group. These numbers might be slower to grow in Sussex County, but they are in fact growing. The argument for ensuring representation of this evolving population is obvious. So let's get to work now. It takes shared intention and collective focus to drive real diversity forward and for any meaningful impact, period. Diverse perspectives and most importantly, the acceptance of them drive innovation and fuel creativity. Truly inclusive communities challenge the status quo daily, enabling its representatives to develop and lead strategy and actively seek context when providing advice on how to engage with any audience mindfully. Diverse communities drive innovation, cultural inclusion, build harmony, and equality is essential to a culture of engagement by residents. Only this will allow all leaders to more closely connect with their constituents. With all of this said, I was disheartened to see that the commissioners had yet to respond to Sussex County Democratic Committee's inquiry into when this coalition, the coalition that Commissioner Patillo voiced as an option for, quote, "bringing the community together", unquote, was ignored by the commissioners. We received confirmation that our request and inquiry had made it to your emails, but still nothing. Please do not walk back the idea of an anti-racism coalition as Commissioner Patillo outlined. It has been a complete success in helping bring together communities and heal these often contentious and longstanding wounds. Reneging on this idea would be more than a lost opportunity, it would be irresponsible. We await your announcement of this non-bipartisan group's formation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Donna Mullen from Franklin.
Hi, thank you, Terri. I just would like to mention to start off, Dawn Fantasia mentioned two very important words at the beginning of the public session, which was, "This is the people's house." With regards to the resolution, I feel Christie Lavin's original resolution included what was needed. There could be some things that could be added, you know, if that's important to the resolution, but I think she was spot on. I also would like to mention that the definition of gaslighting is diverting attention from important events. And this is the third meeting I've attended. I've only lived in Sussex County for 12 years. I am looking to put my house on the market and get out. I've lived in other states, other counties, and I, I don't even want to start with the things that I've experienced and also that I've learned living here with regards to the way people are treated, both in grade school, high school, from your neighbors, et cetera. So I think this is very important, that we cannot ignore the words that are being totally diverted by the Sussex County Commissioners. I don't know why, after witnessing 1621, but I just want to get that point across, that I feel that if you want to represent and you want to be the people's house, and then please listen to everybody and please represent your constituency, not just your base. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Natalie Bucheri from Vernon.
Yep, I'm here, thank you. I do agree with one of the previous callers, I think it was Matthew Conway, and I am sorry that so much time that our commissioners could be using for other issues has been diverted, I think, in this area where it could have been probably resolved a lot sooner. I am happy to see that if we're going to have a resolution, it's going to be the pro-respect resolution. I think that respect is definitely a tool that can be used against discrimination. I don't think that's naive. I think respect is almost the absolute opposite of discrimination. Nothing else can really squash bigotry or hate. The only other higher option would be love. And from my perspective, there's only one person who can do that. He knows each and every one of our hearts and he'll change it, but the government can't legislate the heart. That's a personal condition. It's obvious that emotions are high right now and I understand that. However, the animosity that has occurred during the discussion of the anti-hate resolution has been ironically filled with hate and that is disappointing. I've heard from multiple people on this forum how racist and hateful our county is and I don't think that is a fair assessment of our county. I don't deny that there is racism and bigotry in the world and where we live and it's unfortunate, but sadly, our government cannot regulate the human heart. We need to become a model, obviously, and we have legislation to protect those in our communities, but we can't change the human heart. I'd like to share just a quick story, which I think would probably really illustrate what I'm saying. A family was moving to a new town and they stopped at a gas station at the end of town. While there, the father asked the gas attendant, "What kind of town is this? What are the people like here?" And the attendant said, "Well, what was the town like that you left?" And the dad replied, "It was great, it was wonderful. Everyone was kind and helpful. It was a great community and we were sad to leave it." The attendant said, "Wow, this town is just like that. I welcome you." The father was so happy and continued his trip with positive expectations. A short time later, another driver pulled up to get gas. This customer asked a similar question and the gas attendant replied with the same question. This customer said, "The previous town was terrible. Everyone gossiped and complained. They were mean to each other. No one was helpful. No one respected each other or helped each other out. I hated living there and I'm glad I left." Well, the attendant replied, "This town is just like that. I'm glad you told me. I'm gonna keep moving on. Maybe the next town is better," was the driver's reply. When I hear the hate coming from one side that says it's against hate and when I read the Facebook posts from this group hating all Republicans as racists and white supremacists, I'm floored by the hypocrisy. However, it's never too late to change. Let's be like the first town and it starts with you.
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you, okay. Uh, next caller is Katie Rotandi from Hampton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I, I think the pro-respect resolution is a good thing and something that everyone we could use more of. I think David Dewitt put it pretty perfectly about how this is taking up a lot of our time that doesn't need to. So I'm grateful that you did write that and put that out, but I don't think it can replace what was initially asked for, which is the simplicity of just condemning the insurrection at the Capitol and white supremacy. It's no secret that we have an issue here with white supremacy. It was documented in the New York Times over the summer of 2019. It was, we had, the AG came and did a biased crime and biased hate conversation for all of us, specifically in Sussex County. I live in Hampton Township. I know the family whose home was attacked three different times. They still are dealing with the fallout of that. This is no small thing. Our Hampton Township Committee members said at the time it was hearsay that people were upset because why weren't more people at the meeting? And when we said they were afraid, again, they called it hearsay. So there's a problem here. These all have been listed. So I don't understand why we are wasting time on something like this, going back and forth since January, when all is something that we all know should be condemned. There is a man in Hardeston who is arrested, who had already been on an FBI watch list for threatening Congresswoman Cori Bush. We have a problem here. All you need to do is condemn the Capitol insurrection and white supremacy. It really shouldn't be that hard. We've already been through this. So this isn't about hate speech or anything else like that. That's all part of the umbrella, but the heart of the matter is condemning the Capitol insurrection, something that hadn't happened since 1812, and condemning white supremacy that Republicans have condemned as well as Democrats. I also just want to say that the only thing that I keep coming back to that makes sense for this is that there are oath keepers and three percenters that are here in the county that the commissioners have worked with directly. And if I, to me, that is the only thing that would make...
Rotandi, you're getting off, you're not sticking to the...
You're not allowed to interrupt me, sir. There was a whole thing about respect and you already informed me last time. So Commissioner Carney, can you please, please mute yourself, Commissioner Carney? You are not allowed to interrupt me.
I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Fantasia. Wait, whoa, 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 whoa. This is Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Carney and the counsel, Kevin Kelly, are on the same line. So that's actually the attorney that's speaking right now. So Kevin, it would probably do you well to say that you are the attorney and not just a member of the public or that it's coming up as Commissioner Carney.
Thank you for that. This is not Commissioner Carney, it's Kevin Kelly. And I would like to ask you to stay to the agenda, please.
This is the agenda. I'm talking about the pro-respect resolution, how we need, that's a good thing, but we also need the Capitol insurrection also to be condemned. And I am saying, as I've said multiple times, that we know that there are people that are affiliated with the oath keepers that are, have started the group here.
That's enough.
Please don't, I'm sorry. You can't tell me that's enough. It's a public session. I'm, these, these are truths. I can give you...
Okay, but, but you know what, Katie? I can tell you, I've, I've given you more than almost an extra minute. Your time is...
Isn't this freedom of speech? I was in... That's not freedom of speech, right?
I have extra time. Next caller is...
Hold on, excuse me. We were told before this that we would not be interrupted.
This is not okay. This is free speech. This is not okay. You guys better get yourself under control.
We were told that we...
Can we please...
Before this, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We were, we would be respected all time.
This recording better not be tampered with, by the way.
That we would get our entire time to speak without being interrupted. It was said at the last meeting and this meeting.
Your time is up and you need, we need to move on with the meeting.
The next caller is Jessica Palladini from Vernon. Jessica, are you there?
I'm here. Good evening. Um, wow. I'm not...
Jessica, is that you?
Yes, can you hear me? It's Jessica Palladini, Vernon.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. I am not scripted. In fact, I'm kind of speechless, okay? And that doesn't happen often. I am the descendant of an entire family that was murdered in the Armenian genocide. If anyone should have hate, it should be somebody who's had something like that happen to their family. But I have to tell you, I'm in agreement with Matthew Conway. We don't need resolutions to legislate hatred. Natalie Bucheri put it perfectly when she said government cannot legislate the heart. I think that your resolution on respect is fine, maybe even condemn what happened in the Capitol. But to go above and beyond that, it really is not up to you to even decide who did what at the Capitol. Let the FBI decide that. But I have to tell you, I did a little bit of research when I was told about tonight's meeting and I'm not going to mention names because I'm going to be respectful and you asked us not to accuse, but I did a little research on the Facebook pages of some of the people who just spoke before me. And there are disgusting things said about Commissioner Patillo. Furthermore, this Facebook page says that at every single meeting of the commissioners, every single commissioner is either blatantly racist or complicit. I have never heard any...
One minute.
...be racist. I have never heard anything, but I'm going to tell you something else. You want to talk about Vernon adopting a resolution? Some of the most hateful people are in Vernon government, okay? You cannot legislate a resolution on hatred and I think that this whole thing is nonsense. Please adopt your respect resolution, throw in condemnation of what happened at the Capitol, but please don't be bullied by these individuals to tell you to legislate something that is just wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Mick DiPiano from Newton.
You are the worst.
Is that Mick?
Can you guys hear me? No, that wasn't me.
Are you, is this Mick DiPiano? Okay, please start.
I plan on talking about... Uh, I plan on talking about, uh, thirteen B, uh, thirteen D, and thirteen E. He stands with this, uh, what these info-share modules are for, or why we need them, or why we need to spend so much money on them. So I would really like some more information on, on this resolution topic. Uh, thank you very much. Um, now, I'll, I'll move on to D for a second. Um, I believe this resolution is so excited, and it puts the well-being of business owners over the well-being of workers or parents or families or anyone else in the county or the state. It, it puts businesses as more important than my life, than my mom's life, my wife's life, anyone's life, anyone's well-being. The way things have operated has kept families financially stable. New Jersey is one of the few states that have done a very good job at making sure most families have, uh, stayed financially viable, and a lot has been done to make it that way. These resolutions seem very short-sighted. I believe that if you're worried about the well business of businesses, there are other ways to fight and champion for those. I think there are bipartisan calls we can all agree on in providing support for businesses that are suffering due to COVID. I don't, I don't think that's a topic anyone would disagree with. And so I just would ask that you consider the well-being of not just businesses, but everyone when crafting resolutions like that. Uh, now on to E. Um, yeah, I, I'm still disappointed. So I, I want to point out that I don't think passing this resolution is going to fix the issues in our county, in our state, or in our country. But I do think by identifying an issue is the first step to fixing an issue. I do believe that identifying an issue is how we understand and overcome these types of problems. So I think it's incredibly important that it be explicitly said that white nationalism, uh, racism, xenophobia, et cetera, are bad. I also call for calls to have a town hall meeting. I know early today I spoke to Commissioner Patillo, and it was more useful and a more helpful conversation that I've had on this topic with the commissioners than is capable in these little things. So I thank her for her time today. And I believe having a real conversation is the only way forward because, uh, it, it doesn't seem that we are able to express and communicate in a back-and-forth manner enough to explain why we need to condemn white supremacy and racism, et cetera. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jim Brocato from Sparta.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Jim. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Jim Brocato, and I've been a resident of Sparta for 37 years. Um, a couple of comments. I don't, I'm not scripted either. This is from my heart, and it's not coming from, you know, something that I spent the whole day writing. Um, I think, I, I support the pro-respect resolution 100%. And I think rather than listen to another hour of nitpicking about how many sub-bullets we should add to it, I, I think the intent of our good freeholders was to show that, you know, we're good Americans when we respect each other. Then we can call ourselves real Americans. When we don't, and we start in with hate and malice, we have many things, but we're not Americans anymore. That's my opinion. Uh, as far as, um, the Board of Commissioners, I've been very fortunate uh, to have had a chance to talk to them personally, each one of them. Dawn Fantasia, Chris Carney, Sylvia Patillo, Herb Yardley, and Anthony Fasano. So I'm not using innuendo or what I Google up during the night. This is based on what they've told me, you know, honestly. And, uh, I respect that 100%. And I'm, I'm just going to end real quick here by saying, you know, Commissioner Dawn Fantasia is a class act. She, she does things honestly and sincerely, and this pro-respect resolution is not intended to be nitpicked, but it's to show, you know, what our core values are as Americans. I support her 100%. And I'm proud to have her, uh, represent me on the Board of Commissioners, as well as the other four members. I think they're doing a good job as far as I'm concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kath Galvin from Hampton Township.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You can start.
Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm calling in reference to the anti-hate versus respect resolutions, and I appreciate that you're making effort. However, I am concerned, um, whether or not you're able to address the oath keepers and their involvement in the attack on the Capitol. Um, they are known as a homegrown terrorist group.
Please comment on the agenda items and not use this to attack other groups, whoever they are. Please.
This is in reference to, I would like to speak, this is in reference to connections between the commissioners and people within that group that has been designated by the New Jersey Department of Homeland Security.
Uh, that's not appropriate for, for this, this meeting tonight.
The pro-respect resolution is on the agenda.
Please, we asked this ahead of time, so everybody would know.
So what I'm trying to-
Not a public forum to do things like that.
Okay, you're not, you're not allowing me to speak, and I'm trying to say why this pertains to this, these resolutions and what we're talking about tonight.
Well, please speak about the resolutions.
Okay, so I think it's important that within the realm of Sussex County and the small group of people involved in politics, there are people with, involved in politics in Sussex County who are also involved in these groups, and that they, they overlap. And this is a, a concern. It's a concern to me that we're not able to voice that this is our main, you know, danger here in Sussex County, that this is something we have to deal with. Um, you know, it's, it's, it just, it, it, it's just the truth. And I just think to not speak it just doesn't help. It also makes me concerned that the commissioners would govern from a point of view where they might not accept resources, you know, whether it be grant money or resources on how to understand diversity better and how we can have a, a, a government that represents all of us. I, I, I just don't understand how that can happen when there is such a, a resistance to saying, yes, this is the main concern for terrorism is post 1621. It just is. I mean, it's been building up, and we know that. We also know there are still threats that things could happen at the state level or, or in other areas. And I think you, you know, there might be security, uh, levels that we can do. There might be intelligence. There might be grant money for these kinds of things. There might be money for, um, you know, just education. I mean, we're all trying to learn and do our best. I do think that. But, you know, I'm just concerned about how this might be affecting how you're governing, um, our area and our county. Thank you for your time and for your work on behalf of the residents of Sussex County.
Thank you. Um, our next caller is Katie Salerina from Sparta.
That's Kate, but whatever it is there. Um, first of all, and I want to be very clear to the attorney who the commissioners felt it was necessary to bring in for this meeting, which is just astounding to me, and I can't even believe that this is what I'm saying now because I actually had something written. But to that attorney, I want to be very clear that I am speaking directly about the pro-respect resolution when I have to say that you have shown no respect to the public speakers of this community. And that speaking to things like racism, the oath keepers, white supremacy is literally what this entire two-month process and five meetings has been about. This is your first time on here, and you have uninterrupted multiple callers. I had a first point to make about respect as it regards to this, that I found it almost laughable that you would title this so-called resolution, the pro-respect resolution, when we have recordings, multiple recordings now of the lack of respect that we have continued to be shown since day one. Secondly, when you say you support the Declaration of Independence, I would suggest you quote it accurately. It is common knowledge that black men are not included in the inalienable rights in the Declaration of Independence, and you can't just rewrite the Declaration of Independence by putting the word woman in there. You want to talk about how you want to, you, you show respect and inclusion? You're literally misquoting the founding document of this nation. Number three, as it relates to inclusion, it is almost poetic that one of our commissioners chose to post the definition of tone deaf a day before this meeting, with a jab at Governor Murphy added at the end. The true definition, quote, "Having or showing an obtuse insensitivity or lack of perception, particularly in matters of public sentiment, opinion, or taste, speaks more to the issue at hand than anything else." Director, Director Fantasia was quoted in a March 9 article that was yesterday by the New Jersey Herald, having stated, quote, "Like all resolutions, this resolution is a collaborative effort." So I would like to know, who exactly did you collaborate with in writing this latest draft? Draft? Because if we are actually going to rewrite the original resolution and pass something that is truly bipartisan and not tone deaf, then we are going to have to speak to the people and work with and collaborate with the people of color in this community. And I think that Scott Paul, Mike Vrabel, the two eloquent speakers that you heard this evening, to everyone who's on this call, that is who you should be supporting. That is what you should be looking for in this county. I cannot even believe that I'm at this level right now, that I'm saying this. Again, I had something-
All right, Katie, your time is up. We're going to move to the next caller, who is Stephen Shaw from Byram. Stephen? This is Stephen Shaw from Byram.
Hello.
Stephen Shaw from Byram?
Yes, I can see my time to Caitlin Slaner.
Excuse me?
I can see my time to Caitlin Slaner.
We don't have those rules, Stephen. This is your time. You can take your three minutes or less.
Given an attorney was brought in at the very last minute without our knowledge-
I go to the next caller. Stephen, do you have a comment? Otherwise, I go to the next caller.
I concede my time to Caitlin Slaner.
There is no conceding. We do not have those rules. Stephen, I'm giving you one last opportunity. Do you have something to say? Three minutes or less, or I call Michelle Van Allen.
You can call Michelle, but I can see my time to Caitlin Slaner.
Thank you. Our next caller is Michelle Van Allen from Hardeston. Michelle, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I want to mention that I, I am so thankful that Deborah Barry Toon of Project Self-Petition C was, uh, uh, spoken about tonight, and I thank her for all of her hard work and dedication to help those within our county. She has worked tirelessly to help others achieve. I have been a longtime supporter of Project Self-Petition C and will continue to do so. I'm glad she was honored during Women's History Month, and so early in the month, as should be done when an important proclamation is shared. There were many disappointed last month that it seemed like a second thought to mention Black History Month, and no one was honored with respect. Uh, for example, maybe, uh, Mayor Howard Burrell of Vernon, he comes to mind as distinguished and model citizen who has given so much to this country and has served many roles, adopting, along with adopting a resolution for anti-hate, anti-racism, and denouncing white supremacy. Please keep that in mind for next year, should any of you still be a serving member of this board. Ms. Fantasia, in her speech, spoke about the board entertaining Christie Lavin's resolution. Entertaining, strange and dismissive choice of wording. It should be considered an honor that this citizen stepped forward with this resolution. Ms. Fantasia mentioned respecting the people's house, like the commissioners' house, as it should be, and the reason we have gone round and round with this topic for the last two months. White supremacists attacked the people's house, the Capitol building where our legislators on both sides of the aisle served the public, and all of their lives were threatened on January 6. You owe it to the citizens of Sussex County, whether they voted for you or not, to do the right thing and adopt a resolution denouncing hate, racism, and white supremacy. You took a pledge to serve all, just like Governor Murphy did and President Biden. And I am, for one, thankful that they were elected and that Merrick Garland is now our next Attorney General for the United States and that the Rescue Act passed that will be helping all Americans on both sides of the aisle. Please let that be your goal too, as you go forward in the office that you're serving in. And I would appreciate that you would listen to the people that are speaking and hear what they're really saying to you tonight. This isn't, uh, we all have lives. We all have better things to do than to sit and discuss with a five-board member who are all on the same outside of the aisle, who should be on both sides when it comes to hearing what the people in this county have to say, not just what you think is right. You're not listening, Dawn. You're not listening, and the rest of you. You, you're, you're paying attention to whatever your party would want you to say right now, and it's not what we need to hear. We need to hear that you are here for us, denouncing white supremacy. And I, I heard you mention earlier about the state committee representative. Yes, I'm proud to serve there, and I hope that you're going to listen to everybody in this county, not just the ones that vote for you, and not just the ones that, um, helped get you elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Patrick Carreri from Vernon.
Uh, good evening. I've been listening to the commissioner comments for several months now, and I have genuine respect for the positions you hold, and I've been hoping you would do the right thing. Talking about the pro-respect resolution, it's a great statement on its own. However, it is also an intentional disregard of the issue at hand. Anti-racist resolutions are not a waste of time. They draw a line of decency in the sand. According to the FBI, the oath keepers and Proud Boys are both groups ripe with white nationalists. These people live here, down the street, around the corner. They stormed our Capitol, murdering law enforcement officers and disregarding law and order. Many more people were injured. The pro-respect resolution might be popular with some of your biggest fans, but it does nothing to address the rise of white nationalist groups here in our county. Your failure to draw a line in the sand shows the rest of the county that you do not take the rise of white nationalism seriously. I'm asking you to draw a line in the sand now. It's never too late to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a moment. Yes. Um, our next caller is Jim Baldini from Sandiston.
Thank you. Um, just want to say I'm sure that, you know, there are plenty of good intentions involved in pushing this resolution, and, and I do appreciate that the commissioners are responding to the public on this matter. But, you know, I have to ask, what is this paper going to do? It has no force of law. It has no legal standing. Uh, not the, it's not going to change the human heart. What's, what it's going to do is probably help out the Herald and those out there looking to call residents, uh, county residents biased or haters. See, Gandhi and MLK, they didn't need a resolution to change people's hearts. And what's this resolution going to change? The answer is, it's not going to change anything. It's not going to help the people in our county, and it's not to, uh, it's a show. It's a show to attack the commissioners. And if those out there pushing for this resolution really want to impact your neighbor in a way to make people's lives better, go volunteer at a food bank. Do a food drive in your town. Get coats or clothes to the senior centers. And our families, you know, our families are suffering this last year, and the attacks on the commissioners don't help those families. Actions speak louder than words on any paper. See, my faith is, is in the people of the county. Like I said before, actions speak louder than words. If you want to change people's hearts, and, and I'm sure there's many people on the other side of this, you know, discussion that do. I'm not doubting that there aren't. I suggest you get out and help your community. There's lots of ways you can do it, and that's going to have a far greater impact than any resolution. And it, and some may say, like, uh, we said before, like, it may draw a line in the sand. But you know what draws a larger, brighter, bigger line in the sand? Is when we help our neighbor, when we help our friends. And I'm sorry, I'm just not going to be in the camp to say that Sussex County residents are some large group of racists. There's 140,000 people in this county.
One minute.
I think, and I think we should stand with those people. And, uh, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Deborah Kaiser from Newton.
Hi. I'm just wanted to go over a couple of definitions. Respect is a feeling of deep admiration for someone or something elicited, elicited by their abilities, qualities, or achievements. That's the noun. The verb is admire someone or something deeply as a result of their abilities, qualities, and achievements. Now, I agree that we all need respect. Now, I agree that we all need respect. But we also need to have a resolution which will open the eyes, just like the resolution that's been put in this paper, and you're getting calls because people want to have racism called out. And racism isn't just about an individual. Racism is systemic. It affects all parts of black and brown people's lives. And this particular board, for whatever reason, and I can't figure it out, I personally do not know you, but if you are supposed to be supporting your constituents, I would like to know the calls that you got on the 24th were in favor of the anti-hate resolution? The majority, 24, four and two against. So I'm trying to figure out why you're not listening. And Mr. Baldini, I'm, I'm sure maybe you got confused about Martin Luther King not calling for legislation? You don't remember him meeting with the president and the, because he called for legislation?
Ma'am, this is not part of the agenda. Would you please?
Oh, it is part of the agenda, because we need a change. And if this is that attorney again, I'm going to tell, I was told that free speech at the beginning by the director, that this is what she wanted on here, that they were allowed free speech. And you, sir, have interrupted now three constituents here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm going to concede time back to you. This is Commissioner Fantasia. What I, what I wanted to do was to reframe that again, the comments have to be directed to us. So again, addressing another speaker.
And I want to say that in general about Martin Luther.
The issue, that's fair. Okay, thank you. And you get another 30 seconds. Thank you.
And if you don't know about racism, and that's, that's another thing I'm confused about, that it has been legislated by the Fourth, Thirteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment. And why, if we call something out, if you just cover it up, and you don't bring out anything about the neo-Nazis, the white nationalist, the Proud Boys, if we don't speak about what's going on here, we're just, we're putting our heads in a hole. When you bring something, when you bring something to light, and you open up a conversation, the resolution will do that. This county needs healing. There is so many people who are hurting from racism here. My family was attacked. I have been attacked verbally. I've been chased in my car for having a Black Lives Matter sticker on my car. I got out of my car and said I was going to.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. We granted you 30 extra seconds. The next caller is Ken Collins from Andover Township. Ken Collins, Andover Township.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Is this Mr. Ken Collins from Andover Township?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you can start.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to ask you to please pass your resolution, the anti-hate, or whatever you want to call it, resolution, that, that is before you this evening, and just get it over with, because you wasted enough valuable time on this issue. It, it's really a, a, a resolution that puts an exclamation point on what's wrong in Sussex County. This commission's reaction to the original resolution that was presented really tells everything that we need to know. And, and it's really appalling to me, as someone who's lived here since the previous century, to, to see you be so dismissive of so many of your constituents and to pass this nonsense. But my, my experience with this board is that that's what they do. They pass pointless resolutions that have no teeth, just to rile the public and to divide us along partisan lines. And it's really, really, really disgusting to watch that happen again and again and again and again in this county. I'm so fed up with it, and that's why I'm on my call, on the call here on my dinner break from my work, and I've been listening to this during my work every week, because I'm so disgusted with the way this commission acts, like they want to, the Proud Boys are here, and Kevin, if you stop me, I swear I'll be down at the, I'll be down there screaming in your office. The Proud Boys are here, we all saw pictures of it in the newspaper.
That's not part of the agenda, Mr. Collins.
Oh, yes, yes, it is, Kevin. It is, Kevin. But you, you want to get, jump in with your legalese and try to shut everybody up when they want to talk about it. And I understand, you've been hired to do that by the county, so do it.
One minute.
You're doing your job. But, but, but they're here, a, a, and you guys need to make this resolution have some teeth and address groups like the Proud Boys, because we know they're here. A, a, and Kevin, go ahead, shut me up again, I don't care. That's your, that's your prerogative. But, but if you want to make the community discuss this in back rooms instead of on the table in front of the county commission, which is what you're trying to do by shutting everybody up with your legalese, well, then that's fine. I guess we'll do a back room abortion on this ourselves. Have a nice night.
All right, thank you. That's our next caller, Director Fantasia. I received a text message from the meeting administrator that Kathy Hughes from Hampton, this was earlier, was unable to get through. And there's also a Joe Labadara, and I'm sorry, I don't have the municipality. Would you, can we please extend the courtesy to Ms. Hughes and to Joe?
Yes, that would be fine.
Kathy Hughes from Hampton, are you now on the line? Kathy Hughes from Hampton, are you on the line? All right, um, maybe I need to, maybe she is off the line. We have a Joe LaBarbera?
Yes, ma'am, Joe LaBarbera. I'm still.
So can I, I'm sorry, can I please have the municipality?
Yes, Stillwater.
Stillwater. All right, Joe, you can, you can proceed.
Thank you. The disrespect and nastiness being shown to this commission over subsequent meetings is an attack on the people of this county, who overwhelmingly elected the commission. No matter how much you don't like somebody, if they're elected, and you attack them like this, you're, you're really just attacking the people who elected them, against vitriolic attacks on them in all forms, against political officials. But I ask the county not to pass this resolution in any form. This is a false flag, it's a political ploy, it's something I saw over and over again in Iraq, Afghanistan, dealing with local governments and various oppositions and insurgencies. I'm going to reference, the subject is basically racism, anti-Semitism. I'm going to reference a CBS News report from May 2020 that points out that half of the racist and hate attacks, anti-Semitic attacks in America were in NYC in the last year, New York City. There's 140,000 people in this county, and we can list the so-called hate crimes on one hand. This is Sussex County Democrats, in my view, seeking to get the favor of the larger Democratic Party. I think they're attempting to put the commission in the political horns of a dilemma. If you pass, I'll stick to the agenda, yes, sir. Okay, and the resolution, the resolution, if the resolution isn't exactly what is wanted, it's going to be condemned, you're, the commission will be condemned. If you give, if you do exactly what they want, it's going to be a victory against you, and you're going to be denounced on social media. In reference to this resolution, we have social media commentary in terms of hate that is utterly vitriolic. So there's really no leg to stand on in talking about hate when the people who are complaining about hate are basically the same, the same birds of a feather. One in particular, in terms of hateful comments, that I think should be, if we're going to pass hateful, resolutions against hate, I'd like to bring up this. I'm not going to name names, but, because I was told not to, but I intend to denounce this individual today, which is death on a president.
Please don't do it here, sir.
What's that?
Please don't do it here.
I'm not, I'm not, I said I wasn't. I, I, I follow the rules and I respect, I respect the rules, and I respect that, I respect you guys. But racial slurs, horrible things about women, I'm not naming the name, but many things on the Zoom meeting, like and agree, many names on this meeting like and agree with his comments. Violence against politicians, overthrow of the government, it reminds me of the Bernie Sanders shooter Hodgins who gunned down congressional Republicans in 2017. The level of violence and anger and threats, which are illegal, it's illegal to threaten death, the public officials are all over this individual's Facebook page, and many names that are here on this Zoom meeting like his comments and support this individual.
One minute.
So, okay, they don't have a leg to stand on, and this fake drama is not representative in this county. This county is overwhelmingly against them and overwhelmingly votes Republican. This isn't a condemnation of racism, it's a veiled condemnation of Sussex County's people. It's attempting to paint all Republicans as racists, and it's, racism is horrible and disgusting, but it's not illegal unless it takes economic or political forms. Marxism itself is pretty extreme, calls for the end of a constitution, says there can't be individual rights. I've read everything about Marx, I've read all his books, I've read his books. So I suggest that the commission, we, we still tolerate Marx's, as extreme as it is, because it's an opinion and it's freedom in this country. I suggest, I suggest that we ignore, the commission should censure all those whose comments.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up, but thank you for your comments. Director Fantasia, I'm, I'm getting text messages. I believe Ms. Hughes perhaps might have stepped away from her computer and did not hear that we called her. Can I get an acknowledgement if Kathy Hughes, or is it Kathy Brennan, is on the phone?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, just one moment, Kathy, I just need to clarify, uh, is Josh Hertzberg from Sparta also on the line? Hit star six to unmute. All right, my last inquiry is, is there a, oh goodness, is there a Gigi Rizzollio from Andover Township also on the line?
Yes, Gigi Regalizio from Andover Township.
All right, just, thank you for acknowledging. So Director Fantasia, if you'll allow me to proceed, if I can call again Kathy, for she had stepped away, I think, from her computer.
Yes, I asked her to unmute, so I'm not sure, I heard her voice, I heard her speak.
I am on mute now. I was hoping, well, I'm muting, I apologize.
Kathy, what is the last name?
Um, it's Brennan, B-R-E-N-N-A-N.
From Hampton?
Hampton, yes.
Okay, you, you can start.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you giving me this time, and I appreciate you, you know, discussing these resolutions. However, I feel that they just kind of skirt the issues and are, are too vague. I think maybe what is needed is maybe a task force and a very diverse task force, using many voices to actually hear what different people have to say, to perhaps come up with something that would be a little more pertinent to what's going on in these times. And another, another issue which people have also said, I think maybe town hall meetings would also be very helpful in this situation. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Gigi, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. May I please have a municipality identification?
Andover Township.
Andover Township. All right, you can start.
Thank you. Want to thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I do not envy any of you your, your jobs. I said, I've been saying for quite a while to family and friends that being in government, especially this last year, has really been trying, and I don't envy you any of the decisions or policies you've had to make. Resolution D in opening up this state, I believe it's a bit premature. I don't think that that is necessary to be called upon right now. Last month, the words herd immunity was used, and I want to know where Ms. Fantasia heard that we have reached herd immunity, because I get the CDC updates and there, we had nowhere close to that. So I was very concerned when I heard that term being used. So I would like that to, would like that to be answered. The other is, of course, about Resolution E with the pro-respect resolution. When Ms. Lavin brought this up, it was in direct response to the insurrection on January 6th. All it was asking was to denounce that and to call out white supremacists and nationalists. It's not a bipartisan, it's, I should say, it's not, it should be a bipartisan thing. The FBI and Homeland Security has these white supremacists, neo-Nazis and nationalists as immediate threats to this country, to this country, excuse me. So I don't see any reason why it should be a hard thing to do. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
All righty, thank you. I'm calling again for Josh Hertzberg from Sparta. Josh, are you on the line?
I am, Terry, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, I just was going to get on and listen and get off, I've done enough commissioner slash freeholder meetings, and I thought it'd be nice to have a night off, but I just don't understand the mindset that by getting on this call and berating the commissioners and with such hate and anger, that, that anyone thinks that's going to bring about change, that that's going to somehow convince you guys to say exactly what they want you to say. It's not enough that you came to the table, compromised, came up with something that you thought generally denounced hate, or, or, you know, showed that respect is the path forward. You have to say what they want you to say, or else you're part of the problem, and that's just not the way we get forward. That's not the way we move forward together. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of good people, and I never can't find common ground with somebody when I sit down and talk to them face to face, but you get behind a keyboard, and all of a sudden you can just spew hate and be the nastiest person on the planet, because you're just looking at a computer and not looking at a person sitting across from you. This is the problem. This doesn't get us anywhere. And it's a shame that this is what we've come to, instead of actually trying to find common ground.
Counselor?
You're.
This is, this is, okay, these are the comments about the resolution. So I'm speaking to the resolution and what we're trying to accomplish, but that's all right. You know what? I just, I just don't understand how this accomplishes diminishing hate. So maybe when this is all done, then people can actually have a real conversation and get there. And as far as opening up New Jersey goes, you know, one of the comments before was about that the resolution only caters to businesses and leaves the people out. And I think, I think that's well-intentioned, but I think it's short-sighted in the fact that there are real people that work at these businesses who are now struggling, who are now having trouble paying their bills and feeding their kids.
One minute.
And I, I understand that there are risks, there always are risks. Every day we make risk assessments on what we do in life. But if we, if we don't open the businesses, these people cannot go back to work. Most good people want to work, they want to go earn their living, they do not want their government money. And we need to provide the ability for people to go back to living. That's all I have tonight, thank you, guys.
Thank you. That concludes our, our speaker's director.
Thank you. You know, at this time, I just want to reiterate that we do have open public session at the end for items other than what were discussed. I still, it, it's just baffling to me, the concept of not unmuting yourself to directly have conversations with other speakers. Again, hopefully we can go back to live meetings shortly, we're in discussions with the college to be able to do just that, and, and hopefully utilize that space. I, I simply do not understand the, the lack of comprehension to not unmute and address another member of the public who is speaking. We may need to take a look at how we would go about further restricting unmuting and do one by one from a technical standpoint, because between, between the callers, this happened multiple times tonight. Because between, between the callers, this happened multiple times tonight. So at this point, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Make motion.
And a second?
I'll second it Dawn.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Pass. Okay, next we are moving on to commissioner's comments, number nine. We are going to begin with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you Dawn, I just have a few things tonight. I'm going to start off with Sussex County Municipal Utilities Authority is having an e-waste collection event. That's Saturday, March 27th, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Just to give examples, that's computers, hard drives, TVs, monitors, printers, etc. No appliances. If you guys need any more information, you can call 973-579-6998. Or www.scmua.org. Referring to NJTPA, I met with them last Tuesday. Just a few things pertaining to Sussex County. The NJTPA Executive Director reported that recent severe storms reemphasize the need for the NJTPA to continue work on transportation system resiliency. The NJTPA Board will be voting on the FY 2022 Unified Planning Work Program, which includes all projects and programs that the NJTPA central staff in the subregions will be working on in upcoming fiscal year. Including a freight rail crossing study, an active transportation study for the region, updating the region's transportation model, the transportation management associations, and work programs in the subregional STP work programs. Moving forwards, just to give the public a little heads up, I will be talking about the nursing home testimonials that happened in Andover. So if you had a loved one, my sincerest regrets and condolences. Friday, March 5th, conducted by several Republican members of the New Jersey State Senate and Assembly to explore Governor Phil Murphy's policies of sending COVID positive into long-term care facilities during the height of the pandemic. Among the senators and members of the assembly who participated was our Senator from Legislative District 24, Steve Oroh. This is expected to be the first of many independent hearings from this group on a topic of the nursing homes and Murphy administration COVID policies. Of course, this topic has resonated deeply with the hearts of Sussex County residents. As we lost many of our own and will continue to be a focus on this board in our quest for answers as to what happened to the many innocent lives lost, especially in Andover Subacute and Rehabilitation 1 and 2. These facilities, by the way, have recently rebranded under new names through under the same ownership. Andover Subacute 1 now operates as Lime Press Subacute and Rehabilitation Center. Subacute 2, the facility where 17 bodies were transferred to the makeshift Morgue in April, is now Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center. The hearing lasted more than four hours with heartbreaking witness testimony, including those who have lost loved ones in nursing homes throughout the state. One of the people who testified is a resident in one of these facilities. It was interesting to learn from Senator Oroh that his office reached out to Governor Murphy's office on March 27th, 2020, as his office started to receive complaints about problems in Andover Subacute, which was acknowledged by the governor's office. However, Governor Murphy's administration proceeded anyway with New Jersey Department of Health providing maintenance to long-term care facilities on March 31st, 2020. That they could not deny COVID positive admission or readmission into nursing homes. Another important point to note, Democratic senators and assembly members, as well as New Jersey Department of Health personnel, were invited to participate in Friday's hearing. Declined to attend. That is all I have, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are going to move on to Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you very much Dawn. I would like to begin by congratulating Deborah Berry Tunes. I've been on her for many years. She was a great help to me when I was the mayor of Apakon. Whenever I had a need, it didn't matter the age of the person, whether it was a child, she found a way to give me the help that we needed to help them. And she is an absolute amazing human being. Just to meet her, you would understand right away the heart of this woman. She has dedicated her life to helping others and she has truly, truly made a difference in our county. I'd like to begin today with a report that came out of the state of affairs that the Chamber of Commerce has every Friday morning. It is a meeting that they host for the business community. And there are briefings from different people, whether it's our legislators or the hospital or our health department or our board. And at Friday's meeting, Bob Adams, who is the president of Hackastown Medical Center and Newton Medical Center, sent his report that he was unable to attend. So I would like to read that report. This is coming from Atlantic Health Systems. Inpatient COVID volumes continue to decline across Atlantic Health System hospitals. The total number for all five hospitals is below 150. At Newton, the total number of COVID patients continues to decline. As well, in most days this week, the numbers were in single digits. Vaccine delivering to Atlantic Health System hospitals is beginning to increase with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine now available. We are expanding the number of vaccination stations and appointment slots at all of our centers. In total, we are delivering close to 5,000 vaccines a day at Atlantic Health System hospitals with a goal to reach 10,000 vaccines a day. As the eligibility criteria opens up on March 15th, we are beginning to prepare and coordinate with county, local, and school leadership on assisting with vaccinating teachers and school employees. They will do the same, we will do the same with the eligibility criteria opens up to other groups on March 29th. 64% of all hospital staff have been vaccinated. We continue to educate our staff on the benefits of vaccinations. Close to 90,000 non-employees have been vaccinated by Atlantic Health Systems across the counties we serve. Newton Medical Center is now participating in COVID research medication, two trials. One is a one-dose IV infusion therapy from BM Squibb. And the second is an oral medication from Tylen Therapeutics. And that was the report by the president of the medical center. Next, I'd like to mention that there will be a child health conference held on March 16th from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM at the county's public health nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road in Hamburg. The clinic provides complete physical exams, screenings, and appropriate immunizations for children ages zero to five years old that are without health insurance. Vaccines are administered at no cost to the children. Clinics will be held monthly. Appointments are required and can be scheduled by calling 973-579-0570 at extension 1211. And last, I'd like to speak, this is from Tammy Horstfield from the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce. And she says, Expo 2021 is happening, just not on April 8th or at Crystal Springs or even indoors. After a lot of thought and discussion, the chamber is moving the expo to June this year outdoors at the Sussex County Fairgrounds. We will be announcing the official date soon. I am excited to be able to hold this event safely outside so our businesses can promote their products and services to the local community. I know our residents are eager to support them. So thank you very much Dawn, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Commissioner Yardley.
Oh, thank you Dawn. I just want to talk a little bit about our public health nursing. There have been 40 cases of Lyme disease and other tick-borne diseases this year so far. And although we've had a cold winter, ticks are starting to move around. The, Sylvie was talking about the expo. And that's going to be, I guess, at the fairgrounds. But there's also the Sussex County Day will be held in September at the Sussex County Fairgrounds pending the COVID situation and regulations. But it's hopeful that that event will be fully open the way the state is starting to open up now. I was at the breakfast meeting that the chamber had and it was a very interesting meeting. Just a couple of things that I picked up there and I'm waiting for additional information. Centenary College has a veterinary, excuse me, a veteran program involving horses therapeutic riding program. And that was very interesting to hear about that program. And they're going to be sending some additional information so we can provide that to all our veterans. And Berkeley College, which is a college, has some campuses in New York, Upper New York City and in New Jersey, mentioned that they have a half-off program for students with associate's degrees. And so I've contacted them and I'll put them and the college in together, our community college together to see how that works, or if that is something that will help our students. Economic development, there is a, right now, the economic development group is working to promote a program that continually forces business-friendly initiatives and to promote sustainable economic development through recruiting and retaining businesses. And that's a work in progress. And they're also working to promote and advocate with the potential and current businessmen governmental entities and other organizations toward a sustainable economic development with Sussex County. In other words, they're going to be reaching out to different communities in the county to see who is interested in economic development. I also attended the Northwest New Jersey Veteran Foundation Virtual Roundtable. And this was a meeting with our federal and state representatives and many people that are involved in the veteran community to help veterans. And the idea is creating a a northwestern New Jersey program by which it would help veterans with mental health needs along with their families. And according to the Department of Veteran Affairs, their website, as of 2014, there are 49, 386 veterans in Morris, Sussex, and Warren and 100 counties. And so, and they're providing, to provide better or greater accessibility to care in our areas, it would improve support for all the veterans and their families that are now served by Bloomfield and Secaucus and Trenton. And there are some sites in Morris County, smaller sites. They're considering setting up a veteran center to manage the needs for the veterans in our northwestern area. So what they're looking for is a letter or a resolution to support. So as I get additional information on this, I will provide the entire board. And from the Association of Counties, I know that there's been some talk about the schools and funding. So the question was, do schools get funding from the new program that we're seeing that's being passed? The COVID bill that's being passed? And the answer is no. And they're working on a program, a separate program, where they will be able to provide funding directly from the federal government to different schools. So that's going on. And let's see, that's it. So thanks for the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Deputy Director Fasano.
Thank you Director, and thank you all for joining us this evening. I'll start with a brief status report regarding COVID-19. The downward trend of new cases that have been reported over the last few weeks has stabilized through late February and the first week of March, with between 40 to 50 new cases reported on a daily basis. We are monitoring reports of variant strains, but no new cases of new variants have been reported in Sussex County as of Monday. And the county continues to offer COVID-19 testing, whether at home or in person, as our partnerships with Dufall Health, Vault Medical Services, and LabCorp continue to be well utilized. From a vaccination standpoint, the county vaccination site at Sussex County Fairgrounds continues its daily work of administering every dose we receive from the state. And we continue to advocate every day for more. The new notification system put in place did experience difficulties in its first week of operation. The county's appointment plus system shut down as numbers reached a peak. To avoid this from happening again, the county will be sending out notices to blocks of registrants to schedule their appointments. As of Monday, 11,000 email addresses have been entered into our system. Sussex County, like many other governments, originally believed we would have the ability to use the state's NJVSS system for appointment scheduling, which never happened. So Sussex County has built and continues to enhance its own system to coordinate vaccine appointments. And I fully expect there to be continued improvements to our vaccination process from start to finish, just that there has been since the county started this new and important vaccination operation just eight weeks ago. There are also a number of other vaccination sites in our area that have their own registration systems as well. And we do encourage residents to register with a variety of vaccination sites to ensure access to the earliest vaccination date possible. All of this can be found right on our county COVID-19 webpage, which is just simply sussex nj.us/covid19. Despite our challenges though, there was some encouraging news released in a state report a few days ago that indicated 27% of Sussex County residents have received their first dose of the vaccine, while 9% are at full vaccination. On its surface, those numbers may not seem significant, but it does reflect real progress being made on the ground and that progress, and the progress that is still to come in the days and months ahead. From the beginning of Sussex County's vaccination efforts, our senior citizen community has been the top priority. The county has been reserving 200 first doses a week specifically for senior citizens who are homebound or are unable to use a computer. Our Office of Senior Services, Skylands Ride, are assisting our seniors by getting them on our list and providing access to that dedicated weekly allocation of reserved vaccines and providing transportation when needed. In previous reports, I mentioned that the Janson, Johnson, and Johnson vaccine is coming and it is now here, albeit in small quantities, as the county has received a first shipment of just 100 doses. Again, we need more, much more, and we are pushing hard for that. This vaccine is one-dose, portable, and will again be targeted for vaccinating Sussex County seniors and homebound populations. Sussex County Public Health Nurses will be administering that vaccine remotely, starting with seniors who served, who are served by Meals on Wheels and homebound seniors residing in subsidized housing complexes throughout the county. There is planning taking place now for targeting disabled citizens who are homebound for this vaccination process as well. The arrival of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is significant for the entire state, of course. And certainly that is the case for Sussex County as well, as it will go a long, long way in ensuring our most vulnerable populations have access to the vaccine, even if that means we have to come to their doorstep. There are many components that make up the county's response to COVID-19. And as I mentioned in previous reports, that has and will continue to change. But I do just want to thank our staff, who continue to work their tails off every day to help this county combat and defeat this pandemic. And I'm confident that we are on that path. Shifting gears a little, I am anything but confident on another path Sussex County is being put on thanks to the governor's proposed budget that includes record-high spending. But even with that, calls for dramatic and unsustainable cuts to state aid for our region's school districts. And it will have a direct impact on students, educators, and taxes. This year alone, Sussex County schools are slated to lose nearly $7 million in state school aid just this year, after losing $10.5 million last year and approximately $25 million per year in total since the governor took office. What makes this more infuriating is the governor claims that this is actually a good thing for the state, with statements such as, and I quote, "Our administration will have come closer to meeting our obligations to our students, educators, and communities," end quote. Which at this point, I can only assume is either forgetting that there are students, educators, and communities in Sussex County, or is simply pretending that they don't exist at all. Regardless, it's terrible policy with terrible real consequences. Only two of our 25 Sussex County public school districts received an aid increase, Newton and Franklin Borough. And let me be clear that those districts deserve those increases. But the other 23 didn't receive an increase. In fact, 13 school districts in Sussex County are slated for at least a 10% In fact, 13 school districts in Sussex County are slated for at least a 10% cut in their annual state aid just this year alone. I have heard, and I certainly understand, that there are some that may believe that these districts are deserving of state aid cuts because they've experienced reductions in student population. And that would make a ton of sense, but that's not what is happening at all. For example, I'll use Hopacum Borough School, since I know it best. That district has seen a reduction in student population of roughly about 30 to 35% from its peak, and that has since stabilized, and the district has plenty of optimism about student enrollment going forward. But a 35% reduction in state aid would make sense. However, that particular district is on track to see a reduction of 90% of their state aid. Where is the logic there? And how could you expect them to survive, let alone improve? There was room to cut aid, but not this much and not this quickly. From an educational standpoint, this funding really completely handicaps the county's ability to advance and promote student achievement, mainly because it just eliminates all of their resources. But from a business standpoint, it is equally concerning because education is one of our state's top assets. New Jersey rightfully prides itself for having the best public education in the nation. It's the reason families move here, it's the reason businesses invest here, and it's the reason, and sometimes the best excuse, for our highest in the nation taxes that we have. Once you stop investing in your biggest asset, the consequences are severe. This isn't just an issue that will be felt in classrooms due to diminishing opportunities, it's going to be felt in living rooms as well due to increases in taxes. And despite what the governor claims, there is absolutely nothing fair about his funding for public education or the school funding formula that he is utilizing. It's a disgrace, and it's so wrong for our students, our educators, and our taxpayers, in which I know this board will do everything in its power to protest and bring attention to while working with our legislative representatives, who I know feel just as strongly. The governor has to understand that our schools deserve a lot better than what we have been given at a time when so many of them are trying to get back to in-person instruction, and especially at a time in which the governor wants to introduce a budget that is record-high in spending. So thank you, Director, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Um, so tonight, I'm going to begin with our COVID-19 statistics. So the New Jersey Department of Health estimates that our county has roughly 140,000 people. That's the total number of residents tested or listed here at 136,578, which would indicate 97% of our population. So to me, that number struck me as odd. I reached out to the Health Department and I asked, was that individual test or was that individuals? So in other words, was that the total number of tests administered to Sussex County residents? Or was that actual residents listed as living in the county who have had a test? And my confirmation was returned that that is the number of individuals in the county who have been tested for COVID-19, not for just a random number of, or, I'm sorry, a composite number of the actual tests themselves. So as of right now, 97% of our population has at one point or another been tested for COVID as per the Health Department. Now, the total residents who tested as positive were 10,087. So that's a 7% positivity rate. The total residents recovered, we have 9,020, which is 89.5%. Again, I always like to mention when we say recovered, that does not necessarily mean that these individuals are back on their feet and pre-COVID. That means that they have not passed from the virus, they are not hospitalized, and they've made contact with public health nursing to indicate that they are actually beginning the recovery process or are recovered at this time. There's 790 residents who are under investigation currently, that's 8%. So those are individuals that public health nursing needs to make contact with or is in process of making contact with. As far as deaths in the county, we have a total of 277. It's a 2.7% fatality rate, which actually is markedly lower in the beginning stages of the pandemic. When we were looking at last year, in the first few months, we had a death rate as high as 14%. And that was attributed to our long-term care facilities. And as far as long-term care facilities, total number of residents and staff who have tested positive are 745 or 7.4% of our positive cases. However, those 7.4% of positives account for 48% of the deaths from long-term care facilities, and we have 137 deaths connected with long-term care facilities. Now, hospitalizations have seen a spike around the holiday season, but they have gone down. You know, back in December, we had 92 COVID-19-related hospitalizations, with 78 of those were reported in Newton Medical Center. In January, we were able to garner the Newton Medical Center reports on the CDRSS reporting system. And in January, we had 122 hospitalizations. In February, we had 40 that were reported at Newton Medical Center. And as of right now, in March, we have 11. So as you can see, it's going down. Now, again, in speaking at the Chamber of Commerce a couple of weeks ago, I was able to speak with, or, I'm sorry, not speak, but listen to Atlantic Health make a presentation, and they were explaining that some of their infusion therapies were very helpful and also home care for individuals who are at the start of experiencing symptoms and their beginning of their experience with the virus. There were many more interventions that were able to be put in place that kept individuals out of hospitals, reduced use of ventilators with different interventions. So that also is a, is a big positive there when it comes to our hospitalization rates going down. Now, as Commissioner Fasano had reported regarding the vaccination site, as of now, we continue to receive 500 new Moderna doses each week along with second doses, and those numbers may vary for the second doses that we receive. We request 1,200 a week, we've yet to receive that amount. We were prepared to give 600 first doses and 600 second doses, but the state has not been able to provide those numbers to us. Now, as you're aware, the board made it a priority that for registration, you must live, work, or go to school in Sussex County. And the first 200 first doses each week are allotted to seniors who may not have internet connectivity. So through our Division of Health and Human Services, those individuals were assisted. I know the commissioners, ourselves, have received phone calls from senior citizens who were having so much difficulty or did not have connectivity, and we've, you know, made referrals, also referrals to different providers for veterans, because sometimes they were able to get an appointment sooner through, through their veteran status with other agencies, so that was a positive. Again, we are in our eighth week. We have obviously experienced with our software something that, you know, no county had experience with. In relation to this, we were very hopeful that, that the state system would work, and we know that that system experienced some errors. Atlantic Health seems to have a very, very good handle on their scheduling. Again, because that's, that's what they do, they're in the business of medical scheduling, and they really were the gold standard. And it would have been great if, if we were able to, you know, utilize that style of, of appointment-making, but unfortunately, we were not, and the state was not, the county was not. So we've, we've done our best and obviously have hit some hurdles. I think the logical solution was to send out smaller batches for individuals to register. Again, although the software provider assured us that we wouldn't be experiencing any future difficulty and any trial runs that we ran did come back successful, that was not the case. Though we no longer can rely on, you know, on that, and we had to make an adjustment. So we will continue to do so. The good news is the county had received our first 100 doses from Johnson and Johnson. And Matt Dixon from Newton, who, and I apologize, I know he was a councilman, I'm not sure if he's mayor, this year, he had reached out, and he and I had a conversation where he was inquiring whether or not individuals who were considered homebound and living in Liberty Towers or any of those assisted living facilities in Newton were able to qualify for those Johnson and Johnson vaccines, being that they are homebound, perhaps not in a residential home, but a homebound meaning, you know, meaning that that is their home and they're not mobile. So we were able to actually communicate with Carol Navrat and Health and Human Services and get them connected, and it does appear that they would be able to qualify. So as we continue to receive Johnson and Johnson vaccines, we continue to communicate with the municipalities and try to best meet their needs and make sure that the oldest of our population and the most fragile of our population do receive priority for these, for these vaccines. I was also contacted today by some workers in the county, and I just wanted to, you know, present this to the board just for our, our future consideration, how we could go about serving. We have maintenance individuals who are essential workers who have been boots-on-the-ground since day one. And if we ever have a department where somebody falls ill from COVID, those are the first individuals who have boots on the ground and are in and are asked to disinfect the area. They're consistently, you know, exposed should, should, you know, COVID present itself in some of our departments, which we know it has. So they were asking for consideration at the county site to be deemed essential workers because they really have been in and working since day one, and they actually would be individuals who would be absolutely exposed. So I would like some consideration on how we could get those individuals vaccinated, similar to those who would be, you know, exposed to a large population of people who come to the site for vaccinations with the Medical Reserve Corps. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar because I think that's very real and very valid, and I think we need to address that. So another issue that was a hot topic at, at the state was the change to New Jersey's brand-new marijuana law, particularly regarding the issue when police can notify parents if their underage child was found with marijuana or alcohol. Now, I had attended the Health and Human Services Council meeting last month, and that was something that was presented to me by the employees that said they were very, very concerned, very frustrated, saying, well, all of our early intervention efforts really have a component of parental notification in order to help an underage person who may be exhibiting symptoms of the beginnings of a substance abuse issue. So it was, it was definitely a hot topic in the county as far as even funding for that. So on February 22nd, that bill was signed into law against much, much opposition. First, beginning opposition from the Republican component. Then, it seemed to pick up steam in the public, and even Democrat legislators who originally did vote for it have now called on amending it. And all 21 sheriffs and all 21 counties in the state of New Jersey came together for the Sheriff's Association and the state and issued a joint statement requesting for that legislation to be amended immediately. Because if you have been following it, you do recall that upon first finding an underage individual using marijuana or alcohol, that, that law enforcement officer was not permitted to make parental contact at all, that they were permitted to take down the child's name and contact information, and it would just be an issued warning, but actually would face their own charges or penalties should they violate that. The uproar was loud and statewide. And again, with some of those Democrat legislators now changing on the issue and now writing their own legislation, similar to what Assembly Minority Leader John Bramnick did propose as well to reverse that legislation. So it seems that cooler heads are prevailing and good senses actually returning on this issue, the beginnings of it. Because again, New Jersey did overwhelmingly a vote to approve recreational marijuana, and that is not the question here at all. The question is, what does that look like when it is implemented? And what safety measures are put in place to protect youth and prevent underage use? And how do we support underage individuals who may be, you know, using these substances? Though I, I know it's a, it's a new story, it's a new development, and we'll definitely keep an eye on it, but it is on the radar of our departments here, especially those who service underage individuals who may have substance abuse issues at the beginnings of it. So as far as any other commentary tonight, I know we do have our, we do have some resolutions, so I will save that for discussion prior to voting on those resolutions. So that will be the end of my comments in, in this period for tonight. So we're going to move on to number 10, which is the approval of our consent agenda. There's a resolution, A through C. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. So I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, A through C.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have Sylvia with the motion and Herb.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, pass. Number 11, approval of the minutes. These are the regular meeting of February 24th, 2021, and the executive session minutes of February 24th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and the executive session.
They'll move, Commissioner Carney.
Yardly second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number 12, appointments and/or resignations, there are none. Okay, number 13 is resolutions. This is resolutions A through E. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolutions. And as you can see, it's resolutions A through F. There was a resolution that was submitted, increasing the Board of Election membership. It's listed as an agenda addendum and was published on the website today or yesterday, I believe. I'm not 100% sure. We've all received that, but it was made publicly available. It was something that the election board had submitted to County Council. February the 9th, I believe, they did their vote and forwarded this. And I'm going to actually discuss that under discussion as well. Thank you. I just received confirmation yesterday, this was published yesterday. So first, I would like a motion and a second, and then we can discuss. I know a member of the public also had a question about B, which was the authorization to provide the purchase of InfoShare modules. So I'm going to actually address that as well. So may I first have a motion to adopt resolutions A through F?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second, Commissioner Carney.
Okay, now for discussion. First, for B, I would like to refer to Administrator Poff. Can you please share for the public's knowledge some commentary on resolution B?
Yes, Director. The Office of the Prosecutor uses a number of sophisticated software systems to keep track of various offenses and integrate with a number of state systems for the reporting of crimes. This particular module that is being acquired allows the Office of the Prosecutor to receive complaints and quickly let the victim-witness unit notify the victim. The Child Advocacy Center InfoShare module allows the victim-witness unit to track statistics and make reporting more efficient and allows for the ability to add specific details that are pertinent to the case. So again, this is a system used by the prosecutor's office, being able to track a number of pieces of data concerning the victim-witness unit.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have resolutions D, which is asking the legislature to assert itself and return to constitutional government. Now, I know there was a bit of a public comment on that, and I just would like to make mention that this is not new. Beginning last May, there were members of the state legislature that were asking for a provision where executive orders would be limited to 14 days without legislative approval. So if we've been following across the bridge there in New York, and we've been watching that New York State has repealed the extraordinary powers granted to the governor last year, and they've called for an orderly transition through the end of the disaster period. They're limiting any further modifications to directives that are necessary to reduce the spread or [inaudible]. or to increase vaccines. They're also restoring the right of counties and municipalities to issue executive orders without seeking state approval. And they're also requiring the governor of New York to provide online reporting on all executive orders, providing transparency for all. New Jersey has none of that right now. What we do have is a year of 30-day to 30-day executive orders. Now, there have been two bills, a Senate bill and a companion Assembly bill that we've discussed here at length that have asked to limit the the executive orders without legislative approval. Because as you know, we have 40 senators, we have 80 members of the Assembly who are in essence, basically held back from weighing in on on any of these executive orders for a public health emergency that now has seen its anniversary. So I know that Senator Testa has attempted to bring this to the floor a multitude of times in the Senate, and the Assembly Senate will not allow this to come to the floor for a vote. So again, we do have three branches of government in the state of New Jersey, and the state has been governed by a single pen. So this is our county in response to speaking to some of our state legislators and also in listening to the pleas from members of the Chamber of Commerce, our business owners. Again, this is not a resolution to say, you know, from the rooftops, open the state of New Jersey to 100% capacity, no questions asked, and no safety nets. I don't know how that would be the interpretation if anyone actually read it. What this is, is actually asking the legislature to assert itself, return to constitutional government, where both both the Senate and the Assembly, again, those who we elect, the state of New Jersey has elected those 120 representatives along with the governor to best make the decisions for the state as opposed to single unilateral government by Governor Murphy. So I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas Governor Phil Murphy signed Executive Order Number 222 on February 17th, 2021. And whereas Executive Order Number 222 extends the public health emergency that was declared on March 9th, 2020 through Executive Order Number 103, which was previously extended in 2020 on April 7th, May 6th, June 4th, July 2nd, August 1st, August 27th, September 25th, October 24th, November 22nd, and December 21st, and again in 2021 on January 19th. And whereas, under the Emergency Health Powers Act, a declared public health emergency expires after 30 days unless renewed. And whereas Executive Order Number 222 extends all executive orders issued under the governor's authority under the Emergency Health Powers Act. It also extends all actions taken by any executive branch departments and agencies in response to the public health emergency presented by the COVID-19 outbreak. And whereas the executive is designed to be just one of three co-equal branches of government in the state of New Jersey. And whereas the continued rule by executive order has undermined the representative legislature and denigrated the democratic process. And whereas the results of this rule by executive order are clear and have been injurious to the well-being of our state and its people, including over 7,000 deaths in nursing and veterans homes attributable to Executive Order 103, the economic fallout from the closure of Main Street businesses, the loss of jobs and income without the creation of a temporary safety net to address the basic needs of people like food, housing, and healthcare. The effects of these executive orders on our God-given freedoms contained within the Bill of Rights. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sussex County, New Jersey. One, this board asks that the governor sign no further extension of the Emergency Health Powers Act and immediately take steps to return the state to constitutional government and democratic ideals. Two, copies of this resolution shall be transmitted by the clerk of the board to the governor, the lieutenant governor, the attorney general, and to the leadership of both chambers of the New Jersey Legislature. So again, similar to the fashion in New York, where the courts did rule that unilateral rule was not permissible and unconstitutional. I fully expect that if counties do voice their opinions and the legislature stands tall, they will be able to have their voices again heard as they were elected by the people. And this would help address the unilateral rule for the past year. So that's that one resolution. Next, we do have the pro-respect resolution, which is E. I'm going to ask Commissioner Fasano to read that into the record. But I do want to address one thing prior to that. There was a in in public session, there was a saying that the board did not announce what had happened at the Capitol. The board did release a statement denouncing violence at the Capitol Building on January 6th. I would like to share what my words were at that time for the public. And the violence on display at our nation's Capitol Building is completely unacceptable and the loss of life horrifying, stated Commissioner Director Don Fantasia. We cannot condone violent protests, destruction of property, and blatant disregard for the rule of law. And we must hold those who commit acts of violence accountable. Fantasia made reference to rallies and protests held across Sussex County, citing those political in nature, against racism, and in support of law enforcement. Sussex County has been home to multiple rallies and protests spanning the past year, and not a single event ever escalated into violence of any kind, much less the type of violence we witnessed at the Capitol or in cities across the country this summer. This is a testament to the ideals and the standards the residents of our county hold ourselves to. The right to free speech and to assemble peaceably is accompanied by the responsibility to exhibit behavior that ensures the safety of all persons and property. And I'm proud that Sussex County proved itself to be a shining example of how exercising our First Amendment rights should look. Again, that statement was issued at the start of January following the Capitol violence and riot. So Commissioner Deputy Director Fasano, would you please read the pro-respect resolution?
Certainly. Resolution titled Resolution Re Pro Respect Resolution. Whereas Sussex County is an excellent place to live, work, and visit because of the people who call it home. And whereas we recognize that our county is comprised of diverse community members having many different perspectives, cultures, and lived experiences. And whereas every member of our community has a right to safety, security, freedom, opportunity, and just as importantly, respect. And whereas Sussex County supports and protects all its residents, no matter their ethnicity, race, faith, or gender, and stands united with all citizens in condemning hate in all forms. And whereas we here in Sussex County believe in the words written in the Declaration of Independence in which our nation was built, quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness," end quote. And whereas in Sussex County, we respect the life and dignity of each human being without discrimination or prejudice, and are committed to the principles of equality and nondiscrimination for all residents, including ensuring each individual's civil rights. And whereas we affirm the value of human diversity because it enriches our lives and our county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners rejects and strongly condemns hate in all of its forms and believes that defeating hate is achieved through respect. And be it further resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners reaffirms its support for protecting and advancing the constitutional rights and equitable treatment of all residents and its opposition to discrimination, prejudice, fear, and intimidation. And be it further resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners thus hereby pledge our collective commitment to incorporate respect into Sussex County's mission as respect will always defeat hate. And be it further resolved that all are proudly welcome respectfully in Sussex County, New Jersey. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall be transmitted by the clerk of the board to the governor, the lieutenant governor, the attorney general, and the leadership of both chambers of the New Jersey Legislature.
Thank you. Resolution F was a resolution increasing the Board of Elections membership. Now, this board was actually in contact with the Board of Commissioners because statutorily, after they pass a resolution, it does come to the county commissioners for approval. And what they were actually requesting, as you know, the bipartisan Board of Elections has two Democrats and two Republicans sit on that board currently. They were actually asking, and which has been done in other counties as well, I believe, in response to the new forms of voting, additional days added for voting, early voting, vote by mail. The amount, the workload that goes along with the the Board of Elections membership has exponentially increased. They asked to increase their membership by two, to add one Democrat and one Republican to the Board of Elections. Again, this board does not select who those individuals are. Their their party chairs do that, and they recommend those individuals. So on February 9th, 2021, the Board of Elections unanimously determined that this was the decision that they made and voted on. So they passed it to us. So this resolution is our approval of that. I'm going to read it. Increasing the Board of Elections membership. Whereas the Sussex County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of secure and free elections. And whereas the responsibilities of the Sussex County Board of Elections increased significantly in recent years for a variety of reasons, including COVID-19 and the expanded use of mail-in ballots. And whereas these additional responsibilities have placed an undue burden on the current four members of the Board of Elections. And whereas New Jersey PL 2019 C191 allows for an increase in election board membership by two additional members. And whereas on February 9th, 2021, the Board of Elections unanimously determined that an increase in their membership would be beneficial to the management of elections in Sussex County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of Commissioners that in accordance with New Jersey PL 2019 C191, the Sussex County Board of Elections be increased from four members to six. Be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution will be forwarded to the Sussex County Board of Elections, certified as a true copy of the resolution adopted by the board on the 10th day of March, 2021. So again, for our consideration is just approval of adding one Republican and one Democrat to the Board of Elections so they may continue to do the great job that they did. I understand that when the Director McCabe, you know, retired, they they had, you know, quite a quite a, it's been quite a time for them. And I think they did truly a commendable job in in the face of many, many challenges. And I think that they're, besides the job that they do, they're just a really great group of people. Myself and Commissioner Patillo actually were able to go and meet and talk with them back back in the in the fall. And it was it was quite eye-opening to see the difference in just the shift and the amount of workload that would go along with processing paper versus electronic. So they have all my respects, and they work very, very hard. And for me, I 100% support their addition of two members in order to help them with the workload and to ensure fair and equitable elections in the county. So I'm going to ask now if any commissioner would like to comment on any of these resolutions or any discussion whatsoever.
Director, this is Commissioner Carney. I just have a quick comment regarding our resolution, a pro-respect resolution. Now, I've been here for a month, and obviously, we spent a lot of time on this, meeting after meeting. It's it's actually hard to explain to my wife while I'm gone for five hours during a meeting. Whether we write this down on paper or we say this, I'm not sure what the difference is. But I want to say I do not condone any derogatory statements toward people, any hate, any destruction of property, whether it be at the Capitol, New York, Philadelphia, wherever it may happen in in America. And I could say that, and that's on record. I don't like being called racist. There's there's a lot of things I might be, but it's that's that's definitely something I am not. So when I get called that and the rest of us get called that, that's that's wrong. And that, to me, that's 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 hate. I just, this, we need to get back to business, this these resolutions. I'm here to listen to everybody, Democratic or Republican. You can email at me anytime. I will be more than happy to discuss any issue you have. That goes for any residents in Sussex County. My email is is accessible. You can leave your number, I promise I will call you back. But I just, I think we need to get back to business and stop spending all this time on a resolution that, obviously, before my time, you guys condemned this, basically what everybody's looking for. Not everybody in out there, but a lot of people want us to condemn the riots in in Washington, which I think he did, and which you just mentioned. So like I said, I would like to get back to work and 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 put this all behind us. And I do hear you, I do hear you. So thank you.
Thank you. Would any other.
Don, I'd like you to speak.
Yes.
The Commissioners were asked to write a resolution against hate. But in order to write about hate, you must first understand it. Hate is an emotion, a deep force that can control the hearts and minds of men. Hate always lies very close to the surface, and it has the power to twist, distort, and block out the truth for its own purpose. Much of the unrest in our nation today springs from hate. It shows itself as disdain, judgment, prejudice, bias, bigotry, and racism. It can erupt into a raging violence, and it can fuel world wars. History has clearly proven that there is no way to limit the manifestation of hatred. So the question becomes, how do we control hate when it is so ingrained in humanity? Well, I believe there is only one way. We have to replace hatred with something else more powerful. Love, dignity, respect, and acceptance. Our Constitution recognizes that everyone has an inherent dignity and the right to have their dignity respected and protected. Hence, human dignity is the justification for human rights. They are both very closely related. When we show respect towards someone, we acknowledge their inherent dignity, and we build a human spirit. As we begin to respect the life and dignity of each human being, we can then stop focusing on what makes us different and start focusing on each other. Understanding the inherent nature of dignity allows us to see people as just people without race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, ethnicity, gender, or gender identity getting in the way. That is why cultivating a culture of respect is so important. Respect shows that we value every life. It doesn't mean that we always agree or share the same beliefs, but it does mean that we acknowledge each person's basic dignity, no matter what our differences may be. Tonight, the Sussex County Board of Commissioners is making a statement that we stand with our community in condemning hate and the manifestation of hate in all forms. But please understand, just making a statement or passing a resolution is not enough to effect change. We could speak out against every hate group across the world, and it still wouldn't affect change. I think Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. expressed this beautifully when he said, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. If you are truly concerned over hate groups or haters in our nation, our county, or even our town, then become committed to treating people the way you would like to be treated. The love that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was referring to is an action word. He was calling on people to look inside themselves, to see what they were harboring in their own hearts. Indeed, eradicating hate and racism is up to us, every one of us. And it will be our actions and words that demonstrate our willingness to replace hate and racism with love, dignity, respect, and acceptance. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak?
Yes, Don, this is Anthony. First, Don, I did just want to thank you for explaining. First, Dawn, I did just want to thank you for explaining that resolution asking the legislator to, the legislature to assert itself again. I appreciate you explaining all of those details. My only comments on it is we have three co-equal branches of government for a reason in this state, and I'd like to believe that a year removed from not operating under that structure anymore, that it's time to do so. Most of my comments tonight are on this pro-respect resolution, and I did just want to thank the many residents who took time to share their thoughts with us over the last many weeks, whether it be at these meetings, whether it be in my inbox, or around town, it is truly appreciated. The opinions that we have heard have certainly been diverse, and I think that is the best way to characterize it. But I ran for this office because I believe in the potential of Sussex County, and yes, the resident to call it home. And my rationale for that belief is based on my own experiences in living here since I was five years old, both good and bad. And I know that sounds naive, but my interactions with people from so many different walks of life and ideology in this county make me as certain as ever that our challenges are best faced together as neighbors before anything else. We must all absolutely condemn in the strongest and most absolute terms any hate or any crimes of hate because of the debilitating effect it has on a nation that is united in being free. And the challenge of hate in our society is not exclusive to our county border or one group or ideology or affiliation. But it does exist, and this board condemns it in all of its forms from all of its sources with a commitment to protect and support all of its residents, no matter their race, ethnicity, gender, or religion. But it is not enough to stand against something so serious without standing behind something to address it seriously. In my view, the best way to be anti-hate is to be strongly and aggressively pro-respect because respect is more powerful, more effective, more unifying than hate, and a proven killer of it as well. So let's stand behind the Declaration of Independence, where all men and, yes, women are created equal, that they're endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let's stand behind ensuring each individual's constitutional and civil rights and stand strongly in opposition to discrimination, prejudice, fear, and intimidation while ensuring we respect the life and dignity of each human being without it. Let's affirm the value of human diversity because of its proven ability to enrich our lives and this very county. Let's pledge our commitment to incorporating respect into the mission of Sussex County to continue to ensure Sussex County is indeed an excellent place to live, work, and visit because of the people who call it home with different cultures, perspectives, and experiences. And let's say proudly and loudly that all are welcome in Sussex County because they are. Being respectful toward others goes a long way in eliminating hate, and I do believe in that. Whatever our challenge is, I believe it is best to face it together and with respect. I believe in our county's ability to do that. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. Because no matter what, respect will always defeat hate, and I think this county can prove it. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Herb, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I think all of the Commissioners are very eloquent and expressed my thoughts and how I felt, feel about the issues. So I want to thank all of them for those comments.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, we had a motion and a second and discussion. So we are at the point with a roll call vote. Terry, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 14, awards of contract change orders bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change order bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt Contract Resolution A.
Herb, I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it, Dawn.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 15, financial resolution, payment of the bills list, March 10th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the bills list.
Bill moved. Commissioner Carney?
And a second.
I'll second it, Dawn.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Number 16, personnel, a resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of March 10th, 2021. I would like a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
Some moves.
Second?
Second, Commissioner Carney.
Discuss. Roll call?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Obstand.
Number 17, administrative report. Greg Paul?
Yes, thank you, Director. I'll, I'll be brief as we still have an executive session this evening. Thank the Commissioners for their comments in regards to how the Office of Public Health Nursing will be deploying the 100 doses of Janssen vaccine that the county has received to eligible residents. As had been mentioned, they'll be starting with residents from the Newton Housing Authority, and the details are currently being finalized. As was also mentioned, that 200 first doses are being reserved weekly, being administered to Sussex County senior citizens that do not have access or have access, have difficulty accessing technology. Those senior citizens in need of assistance can call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. That's 973-579-0555. We are receiving information about the recently authorized American Rescue Plan Act. Sussex County is estimated to receive more than $27 million. We are awaiting guidance as to what eligible programs will be under this act. I know that staff intend to participate in a conference call with the National Association of Counties scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, and as additional information becomes available, I will share that with the Board as well as the public. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to make note that I did see, we did receive, the Board received that communication just today, this afternoon, so very interested to see how that develops with distribution. Number 18, county council report.
Nothing for tonight, Dawn. It's, I'm in closed session. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I apologize. So unfinished business with 19. Is there any unfinished business that any member of the Board wishes to discuss? Hearing none. Number 20, new business. There is something that I would like to have discussed. As Commissioner Carney had mentioned, there was testimony given last Friday regarding nursing homes typically Andover Subacute 1 and 2, or the facility formerly known as Andover Subacute 1 and 2. As we are aware, at the time, reporter Jennifer Jean Miller was employed by the New Jersey Herald. She actually was credited for breaking some aspect of that story, which we know the New York Times then picked up, and the news actually went national. I know that Jennifer was invited to offer testimony, though I know that she is here this evening. I'm going to first refer to Commissioner Carney, and then I'm going to invite Jennifer Miller to share with us some information from that hearing.
Well, Dawn, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to then see. Jennifer, are you on the call? Say again, you're a little bit muffled.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, perfect. All right, great. Well, first, good evening, everyone. Last Friday, outside of Senator Steve Oraho, I was the only Sussex County resident who spoke during the first of many planned independent hearings conducted by the Senate and Assembly Republicans to delve into what nursing homes like Andover Subacute 1 and 2. While a handful of residents have continued to speak to the Commissioners on the anti-hate topic for close to two months, so much has evolved with the topic of nursing homes, it's important to go back to this because there were approximately 130 of our senior neighbors and friends in nursing homes who died from COVID and many more sick. In the topics of hate and respect, I know several people who have spoken at this meeting tonight and past ones on the anti-hate topic. You all have lived here for a long time like me. I've always liked all of you, and it made me sad that you've stereotyped the majority of Sussex County residents, me included, with a broad brush claiming we're racist and hateful, while most are very diverse and caring and would do what they could to help this community. Take me, for example. My stepmother was Colombian, and from her, I have two half-sisters from Colombian ancestry. As part of me and my sister's joint European history, our grandmother's Aunt Rachel survived the Auschwitz death camp because she served Nazi uniforms. And when she was liberated and came to this country from Poland, Rachel was hired on the spot as a seamstress because she showed that employer a number the Nazis tattooed on her arm. Yet not one of you asked me what I thought of a former Camp Nordland's history. That's a story for another day. I do have some recent insights, though, about the former Camp Nordland, which closed 80 years ago, now under its more recent name Hillside Park, where some rallies were held this summer. And I'm not sure of any stories with these events. It doesn't seem so mention what I'm going to say. But two miles away from this site in April 2020 at the Andover Subacute Facilities, an Auschwitz-style senior genocide occurred with New Jersey's Department of Health having received warning calls from me and the Governor's Office from Senator Oraho about it, both on March 27th, 2020, before this senior citizen Holocaust occurred. And of course, members of this Board and representatives from the county contacted the state well over 30 times before this tragedy really escalated. Deputy Director Fasano writing a letter to the state, which compelled Governor Murphy to take action and bring in the National Guard, stating the County of Sussex was deeply concerned the state of New Jersey is not doing enough to address this ongoing health crisis. I'm in a unique position because I was the reporter who broke the story of 17 bodies found in this makeshift morgue, which similar to the horrors of a concentration camp, the facility's small room was so filled with bodies, they crammed one innocent deceased individual temporarily into a shed. Can you imagine my shock of being tipped off and pain of having to report on that after spending nights on the phone with broken and scared family members and staff from this county who called me for help? Many lost contact with their own family members and were frightened their loved ones could have been the one in that morgue or shed. Sheriff Michael Strata and Andover Township Police Chief Eric Danielson helped to coordinate a refrigerator truck to accommodate the bodies of the deceased. One, one person actually very involved in the meetings here the last couple of months on the anti-hate resolution called me for help after they lost their loved one at Andover, a story I wrote about, and I was glad to help this individual and many other families and staff from all walks of life who continue to experience tremendous loss and pain over the death of their loved ones. I too know someone who died in Andover Subacute 1, who I learned about as my investigation unfolded. COVID has proven itself an equal opportunity illness in that it didn't discriminate in striking down and even killing our senior citizens. It attacked precious seniors of all races, genders, religions, incomes, and political beliefs. On another note, as Commissioner Carney pointed out, were any of you aware that the Andover facilities have since rebranded with Subacute 1 as Lyme Crest Subacute Rehabilitation and Subacute 2 Woodland Behavioral and Nursing Center? We should be asking why the names have changed. Shouldn't the public know the full history of these facilities so they can make informed decisions about the care of their loved ones? While the facility was at fault for many ways, the state of New Jersey has also been. I brought a report with me when I taped a Nightline segment in June 2020, ironically at Hillside Park, AKA the former Camp Nordland, which I was unable to access from the state's website during my April 2020 investigation because it was unavailable on the state's website. This report dated March 5th, 2020, shows that Andover Subacute 2 practiced substandard infection control, record-keeping, including not properly tracking deaths, and had other infractions per routine inspections around that date, days before the national emergency was declared, and the state knew about it. Senate and Assembly Democrats in New Jersey's Department of Health declined to participate in the hearings as originally promised, and as Commissioner Carney said, which I told those who gave testimony, I gave testimony to, that that was outrageous. It's outrageous, too, that after Senator Oraho warned the Governor's Office about problems in the Andover facilities, the Department of Health still mandated COVID-positive seniors return to or stay in their long-term care facilities. I'm outraged, too, that the Attorney General has not given an update into his investigation, which was launched close to a year ago. New Jersey has the highest nursing home COVID death toll nationwide with close to 8,000 lives lost. New York is under investigation with half of that number, which further justifies why New Jersey should be investigated, too. There are many who have some, who had something to say on Friday during more than four hours of testimony, including family members, staff, a resident, and a medical professional from various facilities throughout the state. One takeaway for me is that we all need to unite in this county, step up, help families and staff, our neighbors and friends who lost loved ones, to help them get closure and to make sure this never happens again. I am asking every one of you listening tonight, if you have a story to share about what happened in the nursing homes or know someone who does, please participate in the future hearings or encourage them to do so. Otherwise, please, please write letters to advocate for bipartisan state legislator participation in these hearings. If I can help any resident in any way with this process, I am still available to do so. Please don't hesitate to contact me. After I was laid off from the Herald on May 1, 2020, I vowed to this community I would continue to seek answers on this topic about what happened to our seniors and frontline workers in these facilities, which is why I participated in the hearings on Friday, and I've continued and will continue to help in whatever way I can. Thank you for listening and in advance for helping these staff and family members, as well as the residents still there in all of our state's long-term care facilities. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. And please, I'm going to ask if you, you know, I know you're involved with some of the families now, to please keep, keep us updated as to how, how the hearings develop.
Yes.
Oh, I was going to say, I did also have an exchange with Mr. Scruton from the Herald when he reached out yesterday regarding the meeting, and I did, I did inquire whether or not the Herald did cover those hearings. He did confirm that he sent a link to a story written by Gannett's Trenton Bureau, but it did not run in the New Jersey Herald, so it was actually in northjersey.com. So I'm unsure as to why it didn't run in, in the New Jersey Herald, being that there was testimony regarding Andover Subacute. But for the public, it is on northjersey.com because Trenton actually ran that story. So we see here, if there is no other new business, we're going to move on to number 21, which is a public session, again, from the floor. Again, this is the second public session for general questions or comments. This is not in relation to the agenda items. Before we open this session, we ask callers waiting to make a comment. To first state your name and municipality, create a roster, and call each in the order received. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. So Kevin, do you have any guidance for this?
Just the same variation on the theme, Dawn, that we have a limited public session for the second time. This one, of course, being about things that we didn't already discuss as part of the agenda items. I do want to note for the record that we have a lengthy public, I'm sorry, executive session concerning litigation and union matters that we have to do. So with that in mind, let's try to limit to what people really want to say that was not on the agenda.
Thank you. The public session is definitely designed to allow residents to bring up county business that's directly affecting them. So any constituent that has anything to share, you know, in recent meetings, the public session has been, you know, monopolized that ended up morphing into, again, something that it was never intended to be. Along the way, the board has received complaints in writing by residents who are unable to wait for the prior issue to exhaust itself. They stated that they were afraid to bring up personal issues. They felt that if the group wasn't interested in it, they feared retribution from a partisan crowd is, is what was sent. Going forward, I'm asking that we all have respect for all of the problems or issues or concerns faced by the residents of the county. And please, you know, respect and give space for those individuals to voice any and all concerns, you know, and not just concerns that may match our own individual concerns. So thank you. So point, we're going to open the session. Please state your name and your municipality, and the clerk will take the roll.
Excuse me, excuse me, caller. One second, please. Excuse me, Director. Could we just get a motion first to open the, the public comment period?
Thank you, Terry, for reminding me. I need a motion to open to the public.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second, Commissioner Carney.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, your name and municipality, please, caller. I'm sorry, I can only hear one at a time. I think it was Mr., who was the first?
Michael Schnackenberg Newton.
All right, second caller, Michael Schnackenberg Newton, yes?
Steve Salvaggio, Hopeakon.
I'm sorry, what is the first name?
Steven Salvaggio, Hopeakon.
Steven Salvaggio, Hopeakon, okay. Third caller?
Zoe Heath.
DeStacy Vernon.
I'm sorry, I have, I heard Zoe Heath. Zoe, just state for the record the municipality.
Sure, sorry, Vernon.
All right, who was the next caller after Zoe?
Peg DeStacy Vernon.
Hey, DeStacy.
Peg, P-E-G.
Scott Paul. Scott Paul from Andover.
After Scott, next caller?
Damaris Lira, Sussex Borough.
I'm sorry, the, the name's a little distorted from Sussex Borough. Could you just repeat it slowly?
Damaris Lira.
Oh, Damaris Lira, okay. Next?
Mick DiPiano, Newton.
Mick DiPiano, Newton, next?
Lauren Jones-Rabbit, Newton.
Lauren Jones-Rabbit, Newton. Next caller?
Patrick Carrery, Vernon.
Patrick Carrery Vernon, yes. Next caller? It sounds as though that's our, our list of callers this evening.
I'm sorry.
Kate Salerina, Kate Salerina, Kate Salerina.
Okay, Kate Salerina. Can you just, for the record, just state the municipality, please?
Sparta.
Thank you.
And Ken Collins, Andover Township.
Ken Collins, Andover Township.
Thank you.
Rob Slockbauer, Vernon.
Rob Slockbauer Vernon, yes?
Peach Braxton, Vernon.
I'm sorry, caller, could you just repeat the name from Vernon?
Peach Braxton.
Brax, Braxton, I didn't get the first name, but our administrator might find it for me on the, on the computer. It's just a little distorted, Ms. Braxton, okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Next caller? Peach Braxton, okay, I see here. Does that conclude our callers this evening?
Simone Jean from Byram.
Sean, did you say the first name?
Simone Jean from Byram.
Byram. All righty.
Hearing no further, callers come forward. Terry, if you can begin to.
Okay, our first caller is Michael Schnackburger from Newton, please.
Yes, these comments are directed to the Board of Commissioners, who, as everyone here knows, is in collaboration with a paid political operative named William Winkler, or who falsely presents himself at these meetings, David Maravich, the penciled in a puppet master pulling the board's strings. I've shown in previous columns in the Sussex County Informer that Winkler/Maravich is a tool of the ruling political elite in this county.
Caller? Caller, if you'd stop comments, I'd like to move on to the next caller. Please identify.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Why was I muted?
Hi.
Sir, this isn't freeholder business.
No, this is open comments, Mr. Kelly. I appreciate not hearing from you.
But freeholder business, Mr. Winkler is not involved in the freeholder board.
This is not, this is open comments about any subject.
Not people like, not people that are not associated with this government.
Uh, well, it is actually a fact that William Winkler is associated with this Board of Commissioners.
Sir, it's not the right subject matter. It's not something that's before this board.
Well, Mr. Kelly, you can be a subject to my next column. Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, thank you, caller. Next, we're gonna move on to Steve Salvaggio from Hopeakon. Mr. Salvaggio?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, can start.
And thank, thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you again to the county commissioners for all you do. Three and a half hours and here we are still. I just wanted to address the Phil Murphy nursing home thing. I support Steve Oraho and the Trent Republicans investigation into nursing home tragedies last year. March 9 of 2020, Governor Murphy issued an executive order 103 declaring a public health emergency due to COVID-19. During that time, there are a lot of cases on the rise and hospitals were obviously exceeding capacity and need to meet the demand of patients with the COVID-19. As a result, the direction given by Phil Murphy was all patients that tested positive be sent to nursing homes as hospitals cannot take any more patients. Joe Panaccio criticized Phil Murphy for ignoring the CDC's and other health officials that COVID-19 pandemic in the U.S. started with an outbreak in a Washington State nursing home. You would think in a position like Phil Murphy, he would understand that seniors are our most vulnerable. That's just common sense. That mistake would cost thousands of seniors their lives, unfortunately. New Jersey, New Jersey current test due to COVID-19, I believe, is 4,151 and 70 deaths alone in Andover Subicate and Rehabilitation Center in Sussex County. He also gave all New Jersey homes immunity. I know Commissioner Yardley said in the Zoom meeting a few months back, he was writing letters and emails to the governor and his team. He hasn't heard back from, he hasn't heard back from any emails whatsoever. I'm sure Commissioner Yardley isn't the only person in office who hasn't got a single reply back. You would think also, once the vaccine became available, he would put seniors first. Think again. If you're a smoker, come right in front of the line. No science, just arrogance. Come November, everyone has to think about, do I really want someone like this guy as my governor? And I just want to also state that the callers in the beginning, just, you're just miserable. Don't even call next time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, our next caller is Zoe Heath. Zoe, are you there?
I'm here, thank you. I have a lot to say, as I'm sure many other people do, but it is disgusting that people are being censored within this meeting and intimidated by the county council and our county commissioners. Of course, speakers are intimidated to speak during the meeting because the county attorney is telling people that they are not allowed and muting them without warning. It is, if this is the people's house, as Commissioner Fantasia says, then why aren't we doing what the vast majority of people who are vocal in these meetings are asking for? We asked for a resolution condemning capital, the tax on the Capitol and racism. And the commissioners, despite the vast majority of people in these meetings being in favor of an anti-hate resolution, said no and did something else. And now they're hiding behind the county council and just censoring people they disagree with who point out the very real fact that there are white supremacists and Proud Boys in the county of Sussex.
You don't get to say that, ma'am. You don't get to say that.
What do I not get to say? The fact that, the general fact that there are white supremacists?
People as racist and white supremacists. We're not gonna do that. Please move on.
There have been hate crimes against, done by white supremacists in Sussex County. That is an undeniable fact, and you cannot censor me just because you don't want to hear it. You don't want to be addressed with the racism that is in this area. And frankly, it is super illegal that you are attempting to intimidate the public by interrupting us when we're speaking our truth and the facts about living in this area. It is completely inappropriate for our county employee to do that. Or any county official or elected official to attempt to intimidate the public. It's wrong.
Just move on, please, and speak about something you didn't speak about before.
Um, I didn't get to speak about the censorship before because you muted anyone who brought it up. It is absolutely inappropriate. It's probably illegal. And frankly, everyone should be calling the ACLU tomorrow to file a complaint because this is so incredibly wrong. Of course, callers are intimidated to speak, as Commissioner Fantasia said, because the county council is telling them no. Do we have anything else to say? Do you need to interrupt me again?
It's your time.
Yeah, no, it is, it is my time, and I would appreciate it if we could stop being interrupted. If people can get kicked out of the meetings for accidentally having their microphone off, we should be able to reclaim our time. Like I have said, it is abhorrent that we are trying to intimidate the public. And if this truly was the people's house, as Commissioner Fantasia claims, then she would respect what the people have been asking for and the vast majority of callers on these calls have been asking for and commit to stop being anti-racist in Sussex County. Thank you.
Our next caller is Kate DeSanti from Vernon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to speak to a few issues. First of all, I would like to thank Commissioner Patillo for her very eloquent speech about racism and such. I am totally in agreement with her. And my wish is that everybody go home this evening and hug their loved one or their child or their grandchild and teach them what love and life is without racism because it is destroying our beautiful country. The second thing I would like to speak to is that I am in agreement with a few people who called this evening about we need to have a public forum where we can ask questions and receive answers. I've requested this in Vernon for the last 10 years, and nobody listens to me. It's time that the public has the right to ask questions and get honest answers. Thank you for that. Now, my last comment is, I think it is atrocious that the county has an attorney who should be supporting our constitution and yet is cutting us off from our First Amendment right, and that is saying what's on our mind. We have the right to voice our opinions, and Mr. Kelly, you have no right to stop us. Thank you for your time.
Our next caller is Scott Paul from Andover.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Scott. You can proceed.
Uh, great, thank you. I'll, I'll keep it short because I want to make sure everybody can get to the other topics tonight. But I just, I just wanted to address, there's a reoccurring theme over the past couple of weeks. It seems certain people can't seem to differentiate the difference between calling out racism in this county versus calling every white person in this county racist. It's, it's a reoccurring theme on these calls from people who are against a resolution that specifically calls out white supremacy and white nationalism. And I, I get that people don't understand, and that's why thoughtful, inclusive conversations are so important on these matters. The vast majority of people that called in in support of the anti-racist resolution are white people from Sussex County. I'm a black man who's lived in Sussex County a long time, and I can tell you firsthand that every white person is not racist. I think many of you are missing the point because you're taking it as a personal attack or something, and that's what we need to get away from. Through all the, the terrible racist atrocities that have taken place and continue to take place in this country and in this county, they have always been white allies. There have always been white allies. Look up how many, you know, white men died in the Civil War. Look up the story of John Brown, you know, a white abolitionist during slavery. Look at the marches during the civil rights, you know, during all the civil rights, you know, marches throughout history. You know, look at the protests that took place right in this county for, for the Black Lives Matter movement. It had to be at least 95% white. You know, there's always been white, black, and everything in between marching for, for what's right and what's good. It's never been white versus black. It, it's always been good versus evil, right versus wrong. So when we call out white supremacy, when we call out racism, it's not saying every white person is bad. It's not saying every white person is racist, and we really need to stop entertaining that talking point because it's, it's really a distraction from the issue. All we're saying is that saying that you're not racist isn't, that, that's, that's not, having a neutral stance on this is what has prolonged the actual healing. It has, it's prolonged the actual progress when it comes to this. It's, we have to be consciously anti-racist.
One minute.
You got it. And, and that's what these conversations are about. It isn't saying that every, every, every white person is racist or everybody who doesn't agree with something is racist. And, and I hope we can get away from that because it's been a big distraction from the actual important issue here. So that was all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller is Damaris Lira from Sussex Borough.
Hi, thank you. Commissioner Carney, I appreciate your openness about wanting to talk to your constituents, but then I'm wondering, where is our response about an anti-racism coalition your fellow commissioner introduced? It's hard to believe your sincerity when we are still not getting responses about basic questions. Commissioner Patillo just said today that talk isn't enough. Form the coalition you called for. Your words will continue to be hollow if all of you do is talk and, as you said, no action. There is a disconnect in this county, and open and honest discussions need to be had. Commissioner Fasano, you just said we must stand behind something or else it's pointless. Let's get this coalition going. Clearly, you must agree. It sounds like you are all in agreement, but no one has the will to actually do this out of fear of political reprisal. Again, we will await your announcement of this nonpartisan groups formation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Mick DiPiano from Newton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mick, please start.
All right, so I mentioned this previously, but I would like to see a resolution against the Tennessee Pipeline Expansion Project brought up by this, by the commissioners. I believe that this is harmful to the towns and to our county and to the thing that makes our county unique and special. It damages the ecology, the environment, the beauty. And, and the same. And, um, in the same way that this board views bringing up the, um, resolution to restore to a constitutional government, uh, mostly symbolic, but a way to tell the governor that the voters of this region feel this way, I believe, is a reason for us to do that. So I understand where you're coming from. We've been introducing new topics. So I hope to see this pipeline project on a future resolution as it's harmful to the county. Now, uh, the issue of school funding has come up a lot, and, uh, this is an issue I have been meaning to bring up. Previous incartations of this commissioner's board have, uh, come out and put out resolutions of having cannabis stores in our county and in our towns. Now, I feel that this robbed our communities of, uh, taxes that can fund our schools and other programs in our county. And as a, as a parent, I feel very strongly that I would like to see that these things being taxed and the benefit of it. Whether or not you think they should be stored in here, they, A, probably will be. And even if they're not, we hear it's going to be here, and it's just a matter of who's getting the money for it. And the draconic opinion of previous boards, I believe, has been harmful to the benefit of, of our county. Right. Oh, I also wanted to congratulate Deborah on her work today. And, uh, I appreciated some of the comments I heard, uh, about Women's History Month. And when I re-listened to the session today, I planned to listen to that part with my daughter because I felt it was very inspiring. I do hope the county continues to explore stories like that as a way to continue advancing Women's History Month beyond passing a resolution. The education, the thought, I think those are all important, and I think that was brought up for Black History Month as well. So I hope to see and hear more about that. I found the comments from the, uh, counselor on today very problematic. I felt the inter, interrupted was very partisan biased and inconsistent with itself.
Scott, thank you for your comments. I need to move on to the next caller, who is Lauren Jones-Rappert from Newton.
Hi, thanks so much. So I guess I'm just wanting to talk a little bit about hope. Well, I wanted to thank you all for, um, making sure that you, um, uh, mentioned Women's History Month, and, and I think that's a, a nice gap to bridge as far as, um, the intersections of racism and sexism and how, you know, black women in particular, um, experience, um, have a completely different lived experience. Um, and so I guess I'm just here, I didn't expect to talk, but I'm just here to talk about my hope for coalitions that can, that we can build, um, people who have the knowledge around anti-racism, um, in this county that we could kind of work together and, um, you know, it's, it's okay to learn something. So I guess I'm just going to take something, um, by Martin Luther King because I know, um, Commissioner Patillo, um, quoted him, and it's great to quote the beautiful things, but unless you've really studied him and you know, um, where he's coming from, um, you, you've, you've got to say it all. And so this is, this is a quote, um, that kind of goes along with understanding what racism is about. And it's not about us necessarily personally and our hearts. I heard a lot of people talking about hearts, and hearts can't be legislated and all these things. And, but racism can be legislated and has. Um, and, and racism is about systems and systems failures. So Martin Luther King wrote, um, "Whites, it must frankly be said, are not putting in a similar mass effort to re-educate themselves out of their racial ignorance. It is an aspect of their sense of superiority that the white people of America believe they have so little to learn." He goes on to say, "Loose and easy language about equality, resonant resolutions about brotherhood, fall pleasantly on the ear, but for the Negro, there is a credibility gap he cannot overlook. He remembers that with each modest advance, the white population promptly raises the argument that he has come far enough. Each step forward, each step forward accents an ever-present tendency to backlash." And he also said, and this is from, where do we go from here? Because that's what he was talking about, where we go from here in 1967. So after the Voting Rights Act was passed, white Americans must realize that justice for black people cannot be achieved without radical changes in the structures of our society. And that's okay. And that those radical changes can involve, like you said, love and understanding and listening. And that's all we're here to push up against. And, and that's all I really have to say. So thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you. Now, our next caller is Patrick Carreri from Vernon. Patrick, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Patrick Carreri from Vernon.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Please start.
Okay. I, I did hear a, a lot of, um, the commissioners' comments, and I appreciate them regarding pro-respect. Um, but when you, you can't say Black Lives Matter without immediately equivocating with All Lives Matter. You're really showing anyone paying attention exactly how indifferent you are to white supremacy that leads to some of the recent increase in hate crimes. The pro-respect resolution is, in a sense, equivalent to All Lives Matter, and it does nothing to address the rise of white nationalist groups in our county. And your failure to draw a line is what gives the impression that you do not take the local rise of white nationalism seriously. And here is the Sussex County experience. I, I don't know what it's like to be a person of color, but my kids have that knowledge. So last summer, when they were playing with a hose nozzle in the front yard, innocently aiming it at each other detached from the hose, I couldn't help but think of Tamir Rice, murdered at 12 while carrying something believed to be a toy gun. So at nine years old, I had to have a conversation with them about perception and danger. I can't say for sure, but I do wonder if any of the commissioners have had to have that sort of experience. Based on the wholesale disregard of anti-racist sentiments, the answer seems clear. And even though I don't know what's in your hearts, your intentions seem clear. It's almost like a wink and a nod to the white supremacists around us is clear. Now, you can still change that, and it's not too late to change that perception. You can help shape the conversation with your power around institutional racism. I was proud as a Vernon Council member to introduce and be joined by three of my council peers of very different political backgrounds in passing the first anti-hate resolution in 2019 during the anniversary of Charlottesville. And I'm still asking you to draw a line in the sand on that now. History is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is, um, Kate Salerina from Sparta. Kate Salerina?
Hi, can?
Is this Kate Salerina? Caller, I need you to identify yourself or I'm moving on to the next caller. Okay. I have nothing from Kate Salerina. I'm moving on to caller Ken Collins from Andover Township. Ken Collins from Andover Township?
Yes, hello. This is Ken Collins from Andover Township.
Can you hear me?
Please identify yourself.
Hello, this is Ken Collins from Andover Township.
Please proceed, Mr. Collins.
Yes, hello. Um, so I, I was going to say something, uh, very much along the lines of what Mr. Carreri said, but I don't think I could say it quite as eloquently as he. Um, so I'll, I'll just, uh, I'll just, for, for, for that part of what I have to say, I'll just, uh, I'll, I'll reiterate that I support, uh, all of what Mr. Carreri said, um, earlier, and that we should really take that to heart because, um, this isn't about, um, there, there, there's a, there, there, there is a, a big thing going on here that you guys are glossing over. And the issue is discrimination. And the discrimination that goes on, that's really, really rampant in this country, in this, in this county, has nothing to do with skin color. It has everything to do with political color. The county is run by Republicans, and they discriminate every single day with their actions against the Democrats. All they do in Sussex County, uh, the Sussex County Commissioners spend all this time fighting Trenton and arguing with Trenton and putting out all these things to put down the governor so that they can try and, try to get him out of, out of office. It's, it's all partisan, party-ordered hit games that they play. And, and they're using the county attorney to shut people up today, and it's really horrendous. And this is just business as usual here in Sussex County. We, the, the government discriminates against a third of the population because they're blue. It doesn't matter if they're white or black. That's just, that, 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 that is all just collateral damage. They don't care about you if you're blue. And that's the end of the story. And so that's what's wrong in Sussex County, and that everybody wants to gloss over, and nobody wants to talk about, and then nobody wants to address, is, is that the political retribution that goes on because you're not in the ruling party. Uh, uh, you look down upon all of the citizens that are not in your party. We're all peons. We, we all don't matter. Our opinions don't matter. You're going to pass resolutions that we all hate and despise so we can come down and yell at you because that's what you want to do, is get us all to come down and yell at you so you can demonize us all. We get that. That's what Bill Winkler is for. We know. Um, you know, but, but that's, that's business as usual in Sussex County. Been since before I moved here, last century, and it's still the way it's done, no matter who is sitting in those chairs at the commissioners' meetings. And it, it's the same mentality, and you guys just perpetuating with your ridiculous resolution that you passed. That is really a resolution that ignores.
Mr. Collins, your time is up. Director Fantasia, there must have been an issue. Kate Salerina is, um, I believe, raising her hand to speak. There might have been a technical issue.
Yeah, I see that.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, Kate, you can speak.
Yeah, I'm here if you can hear me. Thank you so much. Um, so yeah, crazy night. Seems like we've already surpassed our, uh, um, record as far as time goes with these meetings. You know, again, two months later, five meetings into this whole thing. Uh, again, I, I was, I, I really like to prepare things and speak as objectively, uh, as objectively as possible, um, whenever I involve myself with things like this. But I got to tell you, I couldn't even bring myself to do that. And I was even going to, like, give you guys props for adjusting your initial, uh, resolution, if you could call it that. But, I mean, what we've all witnessed here tonight, and for those callers who have been in support of the original resolution, who have continued to call in and who are here now, uh, you know, four hours into this, like, thank you so much. Your support means everything. With the passing, and just so you know, this is a statement to all of those who are in support of what we're doing here, uh, this just means that we're in phase two now. That's what's happening. They, they passed what they wanted to pass. We observed what we needed to observe. It's all on the record. Uh, this meeting in and of itself is going to be a lot to unpack. So, you know, I just wanted to recap a little bit that the Sussex County Commissioners, yes, this is for you, Mr. Kelly, the Sussex County Commissioners felt it was in their best interest, apparently, to have an attorney sit in on this meeting at the last minute. So, one, why? Two, why has he been continuously allowed to disrupt the public during their commentary? Three, why are these interjections completely being made when terms like oath keepers, white supremacists, and the accusation we're making about William Winkler comes into conversation? And I think it's clear why that's happening, and I think it's clear why it's not happening to the dissenting speakers. I also found very interesting, the speakers that jumped on at the very tail end and were seemingly texting us and the commissioners to, uh, to add to the dissenting voices at the last minute in the last public hearing. So, as far as, like, respect goes, I would like you to remember this when you try to define respect for us. To that end, I want to be clear, like Scott Paul said, like all of us have said, no one in the course of these meetings has directly accused commissioners of being racist. No one in support of Leighton's original resolution believes all white people are bad or racist, nor have we accused conservative, all conservatives of being racist. All of the accusations that be, that are being leveraged against us now have been made against us by people with no evidence to support it, whose voices are being heard. We had to sit here and listen to it all night. And again, your actions throughout these two months have told us enough. We know all we need to know. We're going to continue to do our due diligence, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to the great things that are going to come to this county. I think the future is very bright. I'm really excited, you guys. Thank you again for all of the support of the people that have been here. Don't listen to the blues. We're bigger than that.
Kate, thank you. Our next caller is Rob Slakbauer.
Give it to him, Rob.
Good evening. First thing I wanted to say was, I think it's a shame that right-wing political operatives were allowed to hijack this issue for the last two months and spin a narrative that is completely untrue and has been echoed here several times tonight. Nowhere in the resolution, I'm sorry? Okay. Nowhere in the original anti-hate resolution did any, did it say anywhere that, uh, the people in the county or that Republicans were all racist? But yet, that is the, that is a line that was repeated over and over and over again from the dissenting opinions. And I, I think it's, I, I think it's pretty disturbing that no one, um, in any position of authority here has even thought to, you know, to, to at least acknowledge that that was completely wrong. I also think it's ridiculous that two paid employees of Sussex County, um, were speaking tonight, one being the attorney who was silencing people, and, and other, a, the, a publicist who compared, and oversubacute, which, yes, has lots of problems and always has, but compared it to the Holocaust. I mean, seriously? We're making Nazi Germany comparisons now with a nursing home? I don't know. I, 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 I heard some people earlier, um, one of the commissioners was quoting the Declaration of Independence. And honestly, there is a whole, uh, piece of that, that I think should be kept in mind for people who are going to vote. Um, and that is that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, driving their powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government laying at its foundation on such principles that organizing and powers in such a form to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. And our current Board of Commissioners do not affect our safety and happiness. So yes, come this fall, there will be a change. Thank you.
Our next caller is Peach Braxton.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Please start.
Okay. We've been over this again and again in this country, when those in power represent a pissed-off majority whipping up hysteria against another to make their bones, pretend that it's not happening. Now, while I appreciate my white neighbors who've come on here tonight to talk about how they personally haven't seen any racism in Sussex County, they seem to completely miss the point of what's being discussed. They claim the Democrats are just trying to make Sussex County look racist, but the matter at hand is whether or not the county's elected legislature will condemn white supremacy. Condemning racism doesn't make you look racist. Refusing to condemn it makes you look racist. Pretending that it's not a problem here is what makes you look racist. And attempting to paint yourselves as victims because you're being called out on your silence definitely isn't going to make your point. I'm a child of black and Jewish Americans. My people have been in this country a very long time, much longer than many non-Hispanic white families. And as two of the most prized ethnic groups, know a thing or two about hate looks like. And suffice it to say, it's a whole lot worse than being an elected official getting called a duty head on social media. So pushing this mealy-mouthed rhetoric on pro-respect rings hollow when you're resorting to both-sides-ism and employing an unelected attorney to censor people. It's also important that hatred isn't always as overt as burning crosses and dropping N-bombs in people's faces. It also calls for nationalism and pleasantries while, but those of us who have no choice but to live in the fallout centuries of systemic racism are exaggerating. Commissioner Fizano was wrong when he said that the strongest way to be anti-hate is to be pro-respect. Commissioner Fizano was wrong when he said that the strongest way to be anti-hate is to be pro-respect. The strongest way to be anti-hate is to scream it. Say it. Say it out loud that white supremacy is a stain on our society. Say it out loud that you agree with the Department of Homeland Security, that the greatest threat of terrorism comes from white supremacists and other far-right groups. Say it out loud that systemic racism persists here regardless of whether or not you personally see it.
One minute.
Say it out, say it out loud that Black Lives Matter, not because nobody else lives matter, but as an acknowledgement that in this country, Black lives have historically mattered a lot less than white lives. And that has got to stop. I get that it's not politically advantageous to announce your own base, but if you truly don't stand with white supremacists, then you should have no problem saying so and being firm about it. Finally, I'm just gonna point out Jennifer Jean Miller, a paid employee of the county who quotes internet rags, just compared the Andover SubQ to the Holocaust. Our country has only recently operated actual concentration camps for children under the previous administration, plus some of us descend from victims and survivors of programs, myself included. So if that garbage of comparing mismanagement to a genocide along with your ideas of pro-respect, then that makes it all the more of a joke than it is. Good night.
Our final caller is Simone Jean from Byram.
Yes, it's Simone Jean from Byram. I appreciate the commissioners for having this forum and allowing us to speak. As, that's probably as far as I can go. If people from Sussex County are taking the time to attend these meetings to call attention to a factual issue, hate and white supremacy, which has been a historical and factual issue, not only in the world, but in our community, because I'm 56 and I've lived here most of my life and I'm white, but my brother's black and I brought this up at the last meeting. So I have actual experiences and my, I'm married to someone who happens to be black. So I still have actual experiences. I know how bad it is. But I do believe Sussex County is beautiful. I do believe that the work that you do is important and I respect you. I have not heard one person disrespect you as far as the majority of people that are talking to you, right, about changing this resolution to include exactly what they want. There's only been two or three or four people at each meeting who have their, you know, their stage to support you, right? But the, the problem is you work for us. The idea that they're telling us we can't critique you, you took that position. We are the people. It is our job to critique you. That is what patriotism is. It's not about, it's loving your country and the people in it, not loving your government. I mean, I'm a person who can't stand Democrats or Republicans in, in New Jersey. You're both corrupt. But the idea that they, that Kristi Levine took the time to write a resolution and you could have just adopted it and in good faith, at least shown some good faith, is the reason why you probably won't be in position in the future. Because things are changing in Sussex County. And one thing COVID gave us was a whole new group of people who would not stand for this bullshit. And that's what it is. And again, I still respect you. I'm not calling, no one called you a racist.
Ma'am, you're not allowed to use those words in a public meeting. We said that at the very introduction.
Oh, and you're right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna write complaints up the ass about you because you need to go.
Please don't use profanity in a public meeting.
I'm going to
Freedom of speech.
The time is up. That concludes our second public session.
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers again. For not using profanity and that is why that caller was not speaking any further on the issue. I don't have many comments to that. Again, like it was said by another speaker, it is, it's a lot to digest. Granted, the board takes all of the information in. Again, we did, we did sign up for this. I think it's a little bit of a misnomer to say no one insulted you and then 30 seconds later say you are corrupt, but I digress. What I can say as far as censorship, nobody on this board supports the idea of censorship. What I can say is that members of the public cannot make defamatory statements about other members of the public. That is called slander. There is a difference between free speech and defaming another member of the public. So you are free to speak about ideas in, in hypotheticals, but to name individuals who are citizens and make what was in essence, as of the last meeting and then this meeting, a false statement that could injure the reputation of a member of the public, it's called defamation. So that type of speech, you are not permitted to defame another member of the public in these meetings. So our directive, obviously, is to limit profanity and limit any defamation towards any other member of the public. Now, as far as the attorney being present, many of you have been present at the past meetings that we have had. Mr. Kelly is present at every single meeting. So to say that he was added to this meeting in the 11th hour is baffling to me because every time when we get around number 17 or 18 and there's a county council report or we go into executive session, you will hear his voice. So he is present at every meeting. So I'm a little, you know, a little confused as to why it would be alleged that this is the first meeting that he has attended, because that certainly isn't the case. Again, and just to touch one more thing on the slander issue, we all walk a line and speak can be considered slander if you accuse somebody of committing a crime. So when we call out a member of the public and say, for instance, they are a terrorist or something along those lines, a terrorist, that, that's criminal activity. So I just ask that instead of speaking in absolutes and walking the line of slander against one another in the public, that you just take stock in that and research that as to what is permissible to say about other members of the public because these meetings are recorded. They can be rebroadcasted, which raises the level to another, there, there's another level of responsibility as the county does make these recordings unedited in their raw form available to the public. So in all, you know, in perpetuity and forever, your words are on record with what you say here. All of us are. So I just want to clarify from, from my standpoint as to a couple of the things that I saw tonight between members of the public that, that cannot happen. I need a motion to close the floor for public comment to return to regular business.
I'll make the motion done.
In a second.
I'll second.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As a reminder, please check the county website, www.sussex nj.us for upcoming meeting schedules and also please visit the COVID-19 portal that we have on there that has all information. It's a one-stop shop, not only for services provided by the County of Sussex, but also ancillary services such as testing for COVID, vaccinations at other sites, many links directly to state resources and also links to, for instance, our Chamber of Commerce that maintains an active business listing, restaurants and things of that nature. So please visit the county website for all things Sussex County. So number 23 is executive session. It's a resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 at EQ. So I'm going to turn this over to Terry.
Whereas the subject matter about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13 that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations and the attorney-client privilege, which include review of current and pending litigation, PBA 138 Sheriff's Unit, PBA 138 Prosecutor's Unit and SAS, SaaS, Software as a Service agreements for the Health Department. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by the law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of this business which the Board has entered into executive session. Commissioners, I just need some direction. Are you resuming an open session or you will be adjourning from executive session?
We will be adjourning from executive session. We do not expect to take formal action.
Thank you. The Board shall not reconvene and will adjourn its meeting from executive session.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
Still move, Commissioner Carney?
In a second.
I'm second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we will be entering into executive session. Before we adjourn, I don't know if the caller is still on. I do know, let me take a look and scroll down. I do not see him. So I will, I received an email from an individual today who was actually participating in the meeting, who had expressed interest in volunteering for one of our committees and just sent me an email. And I will be in contact with you. Oh, I do see you there. Thank you for your email. I really appreciate it. Now I look forward to discussing with you further. Mick, this is, this message is for Mick. Okay, so thank you to everybody. Please, if you're anywhere, if you're ready to travel, please get home safely and have a good night.